...City Council for Monday, July 22, 2013. If you'd please rise and join me in pleasuring allegiance.
...................................................
Thank you very much and welcome. If I can have the roll call, please?
Mr. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kalen?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Charter?
Here.
Mayor Burke?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, and we are on to adoption of the meeting agenda. If I can have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the agenda.
If I can have a second?
Second.
It's Mr. Kalen on the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. And we have one proclamation this evening that I'm going to go ahead and read, and then I believe we have some comments following up on it. Whereas the residents, businesses, and the government in the city of Falls Church are concerned about the greenhouse gas emissions for which we are responsible, and a result of our traditional forms of energy, and whereas energy costs represent a significant cost to all those who reside in Falls Church, and whereas Ralph Yatsko has volunteered his efforts for many years to address these concerns, including his role as past Chair of the Environmental Services Council and his leadership in establishing the Energy Efficiency/Climatic Change Task Group, which he has chaired since its formation, and whereas Ralph Yatsko was instrumental in the city, in guiding the city's efforts to account for community-wide greenhouse emissions through the use of the I C L E I model, I therefore, Nader Bruj, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim July 22, 2013, as Ralph Yatsko Appreciation Day in the City of Falls Church, and urge citizens to offer their congratulations to Mr. Yatsko for a job well done. So...
................................................
Members of Council, on behalf of the Environmental Services Council, I'd like to endorse this proclamation for Ralph Yatsko. Ralph has provided volunteer service for many years to our city, demonstrating both leadership and environmental stewardship. He was a member of the city's Environmental Services Council for a number of years, including serving as its Chair. Recognizing the emerging importance of energy issues at the local level, Ralph was instrumental in leading to the formation of a subcommittee called the Energy Efficiency/Climatic Change Task Group, which he has chaired since its inception. That committee has addressed the need to use energy more efficiently and to support the conversion to cleaner sources of energy. We thank you for issuing this proclamation. Congratulations, Ralph.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council, for this proclamation, and thank you, Tim, for your nice words about my service and my work. I just want to reminisce just a teeny bit. I'll keep within time, but I just, it has been many years, and I was looking back, thinking back, reflecting on it, and I believe it was about 1995 when I first started working with the, at the time, it wasn't the Environmental Services Council, it was the Recycling and Literate Prevention Council. I don't know how many of you all remember that, but that was first formed by Annette Mills around 1990, I believe. And I moved into the city first in 1993. After getting established here for a year or two, I called the city Environmental Services Group and asked how I could get involved with issues here. And Annette Mills answered the phone and said, "Please come to our Recycling and Literate Prevention Task Group." I went to their monthly meeting, and after that, just hooked, thought it was a great group, and was involved for about 13 years for the work they did there. And proud of the number of accomplishments there. We, among other things, among a long list of things, just mentioned the solid waste management plan, the water management plan, the recycling extravaganza that we use, what we have today. I was reminiscing about that. We started that probably around the year 2000, and remembering the first one, the way Annette, the way we all set it up was to have, it opened from Saturday at 8:00 till Sunday, it was Saturday at 8:00 in the morning till 6:00 PM, and then the same thing on Sunday. So it was open a total of about 20 hours. So it's a little bit much. We've cut that back quite a bit, and the first one was just clothes, electronics, and TVs, bikes as well. And we've expanded it quite a bit since then. It's become quite a vent in the city, and proud to have been part of that. So I thank you again for the proclamation, and wish you all good luck in your efforts moving forward on climate and environmental issues. Thank you.
Ralph, and for those of you who may not know, it's not that Ralph doesn't passionately care about these ideas, but I think for the public, it's important to know Ralph is moving on hopefully to serve other communities outside of Falls Church, so...
Yes, moving to Colorado next week.
Yeah, so, and just on a personal note, Ralph, you've been a great neighbor. You were one of the first, I think, community people that I talked to when I first ran, and you definitely gave me the grilling about my environmental positions and helped me really think through those issues. So I thank you for that and your friendship in being my neighbor over the years that I've lived in the City of Falls Church. So thank you on a personal note for that as well.
All right.
All right. Thanks very much. And Ralph, if you want to come up and join us for a photo?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, pardon me, but I think we have another proclamation to read.
I have it over here.
You do?
Yes. Before we continue, we as a council would like to recognize for a special time. I think it's all...
I don't think it's on the agenda, you guys are going to embarrass me.
So whereas Mia Grace and Bertha Baruch arrived on April 9, 2013, the full head of shed like air the other day, whereas Mia Grace is a namesake of her mother's sister and Juneette Grace and a mother's sister of sister Adrianne, who passed in 2011, and whereas Mia Grace is heritage Persian, Philippine, Chinese, who takes the music across the broad spectrum of rap music, who were comforted, and whereas Mia Grace is comforted by softball cheer songs and family aunties, uncles, cousins, and grandparents, and whereas Mia Grace likes to tell stories, laugh and charm friends with big brown eyes, long eyelashes, and whereas Mia Grace is parent of a work environment, feel truly blessed to be arriving along the way of the present. Now therefore, I, David Carter, Councilman for the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 9, as Maria, who is Mia Grace and Bertha Baruch, the City of Falls Church, offer congratulations to her family and her daughter.
Thank you all. I thought actually she was having a hard time sleeping, so they brought her in so she could be asleep by Dad's voice.
Mia Grace, how are you, sweetheart? Your eyes are open. That's good.
This is a big day for royal babies.
I'm impressed.
... Falls Church's born a baby.
There you go.
Oh, my, I have two babies.
Two babies.
Who else do you want up there?
Three babies.
Do you want to go up there and I'll take a picture?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, four, that's a majority of the city council.
Hold on.
All right. I'll do one more of this in case.
The flash is recharging.
There we go.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready to, are you in the meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Mia Grace, I'd like to see you with your eyes open. All right, back to business.
So are there any members of the public that are here to be sworn in for boards and commissions? Okay, and we are on to receipt of public comments. The first comments that we have that are on the agenda are from Mr. Roger Nebergall for the Walter Mess Tribute. Roger, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Roger Nebergall. I've lived here for 37 years. That makes me a native, I think, but pretty much. But what I want to talk to you about is on March 24, at the WOD Trail at the American Legion, we dedicated a portion of it to the Walter Mess Plaza. And if I may, I'd like to take you back to that day. It was a military-type ceremony for you who was there. We had to pledge allegiance to the flag. We had a color guard, and we had a jam-packed American Legion house. People were standing outside and so on and so forth. So I'd like to take you back if I could and show you here. This is the Northern Virginia Regional Park logo. This is the WOD Trail logo, which I'm President. And there's our good friend Walter Mess, who has blessed us with his presence for many, many years. Okay, let's go to the next one. Walter Mess, excuse me, Jim Moran was the opening speaker, and he has known Walter for a long, long time. What he said is, is that Walter Mess is the very embodiment of what's been called America's Greatest Generation, and he really enjoyed it. And he got a big kick out of that bottle of champagne. He couldn't understand what that was doing there, but we're going to talk about that in a minute. Okay, next one. Okay, there's Jim Moran. Guess who that is? That's Mia Grace's father. And then that's me, and so on. Next one. Now, this is the Falls Church Symphony Orchestra, which is very good, and this was the director, and he left the next week, and I do not know his name. Anyone know his name? He's not the director anymore, but anyway, they were, the band was absolutely fantastic. Okay, next one. Okay, there's Jim Moran introducing Walter at May, there's the American, and here is the Chairman of the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority. Okay. His name is Brian Knapp. Here's Walter speaking. What was so amazing was that he was approaching 100 years old. He had it all together, and he could tell jokes and had a wonderful time. I might add that people were saying, "Roger, you're only 90, and here's Walter almost 100, and you're a baby compared to him." And that's really a true statement. Okay, the Mayor's enjoying himself. Okay, next one. There we go. Mia Grace's dad is still enjoying himself. Okay. Okay. Now it's time for Walter to talk again, and here we go. Next one. The hardest thing I had to do was get all the people out of the American Legion Hall outside. Among other things, I had to do color guard first and so on. And now we know the bottle of champagne, and Jim Moran says, "You've got to be kidding. You're going to bring a good bottle of champagne on that rock?" We said, "Yes, we are." And Walter took a slug at it, and guess what? Nothing happened. Then he did it again. Okay, now look what happened. Champagne all over the place. And again, Mia Grace's dad enjoys himself very much, and so am I. Okay, next one. Notice that Walter's got a weapon in his hand, which is sharp as could be and so on and so forth. So my immediate responsibility as the President was to take it out of his hand, which I just did. Now I'll show you. See, I've got it in my hand so no one can be hurt. Jim Moran really has enjoyed that, and by the way, I might add, in public speaking since that time, on several occasions, he's mentioned smashing the bottle of champagne on a rocket Falls Church. Okay. There's Jim Moran shaking Walter's hand. Next one. There they are, having a wonderful time. Okay. Guess what? We just saw Mama. We just saw Bernie and the baby, and there we all are. Everybody's happy. The next one. And there's Walter. This is a so-long farewell to Walter, not goodbye, because Walter will always be in our hearts. As a farewell salute, right-hand salute, Walter, God bless. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I might, I'm only going to say something after that because Roger asked me to say something, and when Roger asks me to do something, if I'm really smart, I do what he asks. So it's a pleasure to follow on with a couple comments. I've had the opportunity to work with Walter Mess over probably about two decades, and I first met him at the Veterans Ceremonies there on the bike path, and I got to know what a real giant he was. The interesting thing about Walter is when you talk to him, it was never about him. It was always about you. How is your family? How's the city going? You know, what, how are things going? So that was one of his hallmarks. Of course, we know from his personal history that he was recruited by Bill Donovan as one of the original OSS members, those World War II heroism is virtually unmatched, that he did very well in business, and that he used all of that for the benefit of the community in terms of basically establishing the Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority and then responsible for the W N O D Trail, and on and on and on. He is one of the things that makes, one of the people that makes Falls Church really a very special place that it is, a real giant, and we've lost a giant, and it's a great loss to all of us. But he, his, what he's done, his legacy will live on for the millions of people who use the parks year in and year out. I last saw him on the day of the race. I heard that he wasn't doing too well, so I went and visited him at the hospital. His spirits were high. He dispensed really good advice. Again, if I follow it, I do the right thing, and if not, I'm usually wrong. He, one of the comments that he made was at a board meeting, "Never talk unless you're spoken to." Unfortunately, I don't follow that one very often, but that's the kind of advice that he was good at giving, and someone so well-accomplished in so many areas, you take that very seriously. So we've lost Walter, but we have Roger, and Roger did not ask me to say this, and it's probably embarrassing, but Roger Nebergall himself is one of the great citizens of Falls Church, having contributed significantly to this nation being where we are today as a Ranger during World War II, including D-Day and scaling the cliffs there. And he's done so much for the community since in so many ways, and is probably into his eighth or ninth successful business venture, as far as I know, and that's probably just this year. So I'd like to suggest a round of applause for Roger, and we want to recognize him more formally in the future, but let's have a round of applause for Roger. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Snyder, and Roger, thank you, and...
We're all done.
The next speaker slip that I have on issues that are not on the agenda is Mr. Nick Benton.
Nick Benton, owner and editor of the Falls Church News Press. I just wanted to say very briefly that you're all more than welcome to attend our annual Social Mixer this Thursday evening, 5:30 to 7:30, in conjunction with the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce. It'll be at our office right across the street, 200 Little Falls, from 5:30 to 7:30, catered by Lito Pizza, and I know that Walter Mess and Roger have been to them in the past, so I welcome you to come. This is our 23rd consecutive year doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nick.
Mr. Mayor, very quickly, before Nick walks off, there's another passing that we need to recognize, that of Helen Thomas, who has been a guest a number of times at Nick's social gatherings, and Nick played a key role late in her career of helping her through a rough patch, and a credit to you, Nick, for all that you have done to support and work with one of the real pioneers in journalism, Helen Thomas. So I just wanted to recognize her passing and your role and partnership with her over the years. Thank you.
The remaining speaker slips that I have are on issues on the agenda. I'm happy to take those speaker slips now or when we get to those agenda items. I'm not seeing anybody come forward. I'll hold those until we get to the agenda item. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the Council on any issues? We are, yes?
Could I just, before I move on, I just wanted to acknowledge Kathy Bouchau, who wrote your proclamation. I failed to mention that earlier.
Dave, I thought that was all you.
All me and Hart, right here, my friend. Anyway, thank you.
Great. Thank you to the council members and also to Kathy for drafting that. That was very nice. I see a hand if it's...
I'm in the public, but I didn't have a...
Yes, absolutely. If you would just go ahead and fill out a speaker slip, and then I'll call you as we get to it. Is it on a matter that's on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Veronica, if I can, if you can provide us a summary of the comments we've received?
We have 11 letters. The City Clerk's Office really receives 11 letters in support of the proposed split lot ordinance and three in opposition of the proposed split lot ordinance. Donald Pharoah of 229 Forest Drive asked Council to consider providing implementation guidance in the proposed split lot ordinance, and Michael Connolly, the President of the Vipas Board of Directors, wrote that Vipas supported the proposed split lot ordinance, and he said that if the one-year grace period is approved, then the provision for grandfathering less-than-fullly-approved permits should be eliminated.
Veronica, we are on to council requests. Council members, any requests for staff? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city attorney issued an opinion, I guess, on what council members may say and do in relation to the water referendum. I wonder if you have plans tonight to make that public, or if he could, or if neither of those are going to happen, I would like to get that on the record if we could.
I think what we can do, there's two approaches. One, we could, it's the council's prerogative to release that memo. What we've done at other times is simply had the city attorney provide a conclusion that he reached in a way that can be done publicly, but still protect the attorney-client privilege matter, so I think that's the council's prerogative. I would suggest that we do what we've done in the past and just have the city manager provide his conclusions without getting into the deliberative materials. Mr. Duncan, would that address what you're asking for? That Mr. Foster would provide the conclusions that he reached in his memo, so it would essentially be a summary. Yeah. Mr. Foster? Oh. Okay. Related to this, Mr. Gell? Mr. Foster?
Would you like that now? The conclusion is that individual members of council as citizens certainly can state their views on the proposed sale of the water system. It needs to be clearly understood, however, that they need to make it clear when they make those statements that they're speaking as individual council members, not as, or individual citizens, not as council members. And with those limitations and the other limitations that I'd laid out in my advice to you, certainly you may take a position with respect to the proposed sale of the system.
Thank you. Kalen?
Thank you. Just for the city managers, just to confirm that we'll get a brief report from our CFO regarding the effect of the Detroit bankruptcy on municipal bonds and our fund balance analysis. If we'd be able to include that. I think I'd given a heads-up that this was going to be requested.
Okay, we could do that. Let me confer with the CFO. I am just getting into town, and I haven't had a chance to discuss it with him, but let me confer with him and get back with you as to whether we can provide that report tonight or schedule that for the next work session.
Any other council member requests? Okay, we are on to report of the city manager to the city council. Mr. Shields?
The CFO has material that he has prepared in response to your query earlier today. If the council would like to hear that this evening, we could do that, or we could schedule that for a later date, as the council's preference on that.
We've got a fairly packed agenda with speaker slips, so we could take it on tonight or we can do it at a work session. It's up to council members.
Well, it's, yes, it is. It's important now, if you want to do it at the end, if we run out of time...
Why don't we do that? Why don't we take it up at the end?
But it is something that's very hot right now. I'd rather catch at a city council meeting, not at a work session, because I believe this is an extremely important issue.
Mr. Mayor, let's take it up on the business, not on the agenda.
I agree. So why don't we place it on the business items, not on the agenda? All right. All right, we are on to, unless there's anything else by council members, we are on to the report of the city manager to the council.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch. Members of council, we do have a long agenda for tonight, so I'll keep my briefing very short. I did just want to note that the Fall Festival this year is scheduled for earlier than normal. It will be scheduled for the Saturday of September 7, and we are putting a call out for restaurants to participate in a Taste of Falls Church as well, and so I just wanted to get that on everyone's calendar and also put a call out to our restaurant community to solicit their involvement and participation in the Taste of Falls Church. On that note, I also would just like to note that the city's Special Events Coordinator, Ginny Paxton, has left the city to take an opportunity with Womata to be their Special Events Coordinator, and it's a wonderful opportunity for her, and we wish her well in that career move for her, but also note that, and congratulate her on incredible accomplishments here with the city. I think the special events that she has led and coordinated over her tenure with the city have been of very high quality and really reflect the values of the community, and want to thank her for that. And also note that our Director of Recreation and Parks, Danny Schlitt, has made an internal promotion of...
I did just want to note that the Fall Festival this year is scheduled for earlier than normal. It will be scheduled for the Saturday of September 7th. And we are putting a call out for restaurants to participate in the Taste of Falls Church as well, and so I just wanted to get that on everyone's calendar and also put a call out to our restaurant community to solicit their involvement and participation in the Taste of Falls Church. On that note, I also would just like to note that the city's special events coordinator, Ginny Paxton, has left the city to take an opportunity with Womata to be their special events coordinator, and it's a wonderful opportunity for her, and we wish her well in that career move for her, but also note that, and congratulate her on incredible accomplishments here with the city. I think the special events that she has led and coordinated over her tenure with the city have been of very high quality and really reflect the values of the community, and want to thank her for that. And also note that our Director of Recreation and Parks, Danny Schlitt, has made an internal promotion of Amy Maltease to that position, and she will be taking on the duties of the special events coordinator, and so I wanted to congratulate her on that change. And of course, she will be directing the events for the Fall Festival and doing the planning work for that event, and we will be recruiting the replacement for Amy Maltease for her position as coordinating our youth programs in the city. That is all I have to report tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Any questions for Mr. Shields? We are on to the business on the agenda. Veronica, if you read the first item, please.
TO 13-12 is an ordinance to amend and revise Chapter 15 fees, Article 2, Department of Development Services, Sections 15-20, 15-27, and 15-29, and Article 3, Department of Public Works, Section 15-36, Public Works Applications Engineering, and Section 15-37, Public Works Applications Urban Forestry, to include updates to fees and language.
And I'll ask Mr. Snyder to provide the staff report for this.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you have before you an amendment to revise fees in Chapter 15 for both the Department of Development Services, Department of Public Works. This is an update to those fees which were established in 2011. You had a couple of work sessions on these fees and made suggestions which have been incorporated into the fee structure before you. This also went to the planning commission, and there were no, while there were no speakers, the planning commission did suggest an additional fee of $1,000 as a penalty for trees that might be removed that were on an approved grading plan. We have included that fee into this ordinance, and therefore we recommend that the council approve the ordinance. As shown in the staff report, these fees would become effective on August 1, 2013, and I'm here to answer any questions if you have them as to any of the specifics. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any questions on this before we open this up for public comment? Why don't we take a motion, and then we'll open it up for public comment? Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 13-12 on second reading. If I can get a second? That's Mr. Tarter on the second. I'd like to open this item up to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? I don't have any speaker slips, so I'm going to go ahead and close this item for public comment. Veronica, do we receive any written comments on this? Thank you. And if there's no further comments, why don't we have the roll call vote?
Just a quick question for Mr. Snyder. These fees, are they generally in the range of similar fees charged by other jurisdictions in the area?
Yes, we believe we're competitive. We're simply trying to update them so that they are consistent.
So by competitive, you mean not higher than...
Not higher than, yes, sir.
Other jurisdictions in the region?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other council members? Council member, Callan?
Thank you. This is, you don't have to answer it now, we can do it off, but I just want to raise it with you. For example, one of the fees is for contractors who come in to cut down trees, not talking about grading or so forth. But what I'm not clear is what, that person or that company would have to get a license to operate in Falls Church, but if I was tearing down a tree, say it was okay for a new house or to rebuild, I could take a tractor and just run it over, and I don't need a license for that.
You would have to have a grading plan for...
No, no, let's say it's okay. Let's say, well, that's it. But it's a tractor that comes in and just knocks down the tree. It's not a licensed company that does tree moving. I'm just, just something to say, but just trying to figure out how that works.
Well, we certainly, I think anyone who's doing such a thing would want to make sure they have qualified people as they take down such a tree, so you don't have a problem with your neighbor and it is safely done, so, and that your insurance company is happy with it. So I don't think it's as simple as just kind of bulldozing the tree. It's a large tree, I think you'd need a professional to take it down, or at least a contractor who's skilled in removing them, particularly some of the larger trees we have here in the city.
Anything else? Right, if I can have the roll call, please?
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callan? Mr. Pepe? Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter? Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
We can have the next item read, please?
TO 13-16 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 48 zoning, Article 5, supplementary regulations, Division 6, height, lot, and yard regulations, Section 1102, to bring redevelopment of existing substandard lots into closer alignment with the comprehensive plan of the City of Falls Church.
Thank you.
Mayor Baruch, members of council, the ordinance that's before you is before you now on second reading.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shields, before we begin discussion of that, I believe that Mr. Tarter has a comment he'd like to make.
Sorry, again. As you know, I represent members of the development community. After deliberation and study, I believe the substandard lot amendment and the timing of its effective date may have an impact on some of my clients. Therefore, as a prudential matter, and after discussing this matter with the city attorney, I've decided to recuse myself from participation with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. The ordinance that is before the council on second reading addresses the specific situation of the demolition of one older home that straddles two substandard lots, the sale and recordation of those individual lots into different ownership, and the redevelopment of the property into two narrower homes on the underlying lots. Now, this is an issue that has been identified as an area of concern by the community for decades, and most recently, the Zoning Ordinance Advisory Committee, the ZOAC Committee, presented its report on March 7, 2011, to the city council at a work session on recommendations on how to address it. With further work and consultation with the planning director, Mr. Snyder, and the city attorney, Mr. Foster, I made a recommendation that we take a legislative approach to address this concern and provide a draft language to do so. And the council adopted that ordinance on first reading and referred it out to boards and commissions and to the planning commission for its recommendation. It now comes back to council with some amendments recommended by the planning commission, and I think one key issue for the council, which is purely a legislative decision, is the date on which this ordinance would become effective. So let me ask Mr. Snyder if he could provide the staff report summarizing the planning commission's recommendations and other work that's been done on this ordinance since the council's action on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a longstanding issue, as you all know, here in the city. It's been well considered. The planning commission held listening sessions. We've had several work sessions. At the public hearing, there were two speakers, and also, the planning commission received information, a memorandum, from city attorney with some additional technical improvements to the language, which are designed to avoid loopholes that might allow someone to tie up a piece of property and have it undeveloped but available for development for years, thus thwarting the intent of the ordinance. The commission also suggested that, or recommended that, rather than an August 1, 2014 date for the grandfathering that the council talked about and endorsed at first reading, that that be moved back to February 1, 2014. As the manager has indicated, that really is a policy decision, and that was also mentioned by the city attorney. I would call your attention to lines 106 through 142 of the staff report. That is the language that, with the additional changes, and the line having to do with the grandfathering and the date there is on line 128. If council chooses to adopt this ordinance, recommend we adopt that language. As we've examined the repeat of that language, there are a couple of discrepancies in the language after the hereby ordains, so that we recommend, therefore, if you adopt this language, we reference that language in 106 through 142. I think this is a situation where the development community and the civic community have realized that we need clarity by the council in terms of what zoning ordinance means, so that it's interpreted correctly and in a way that meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. That is really the reason, on the legal side, that we feel this is inappropriate because of the more dense development that happens through the split lot approach, takes the density in the single-family areas above the comprehensive plan of four units an acre and six units an acre. So we think it's important for the integrity of the comp plan and to make sure that zoning is in concert with the comprehensive plan, as called for in the state of Virginia, that this type of change be made. Nonetheless, the idea of giving some ability for those who have these properties to act on their desire to develop them has been built into this, and the question of how long that should take is one for the council to decide. But we've included the planning commission's language in the lines 106 through 142 in the staff report. We did do extensive outreach to the community. We mailed out to all of the people we'd identified, some 200-plus lots, a letter, the previous staff report, the original language endorsed by council at the first reading, references to frequently asked questions, links to the website. The Office of Communications put up a very good package of this, so it was available. You could go in and look at your property, also graphics showing which properties are affected and not affected, and that was mailed out to all of those households. We received a number of calls. Many people were just curious. In some cases, their properties were not affected because the GIS analysis captured some lots that would not be affected, but we wanted to make sure we covered as many people as possible who might be affected. And so we ended up with two public speakers at the planning commission, and we're here tonight to try to bring this to a conclusion with city council. If you have any questions, may I have to answer them?
Thank you very much. Any questions by council member? Ms. Barry?
Mr. Snyder, what was the planning commission's reaction now for moving it back six months?
I think their thought was that they wanted to, they thought six months might be adequate, and they wanted to not have a large number of houses redeveloped, that if you were already in process, you could get that done in six months. I think when we brought it to you initially, we had suggested a very early sunset, and council moved it to a year. So I think it was just a question of they thought the timing would better serve the intent of the ordinance, and that those who are already in process could do what they need to do within six months.
Other council members? Ron?
I'm kind of curious as to why the... There it goes. Why what we have before us doesn't include what we passed originally? I understand the planning commission made recommendations, but those are just recommendations. I would like to see what's in front of us be what it was that we had a long discussion about and adopted, and we can consider changes to it, but I think that's the starting point, not something drafted by another body. It's a procedural issue.
Other council member? Well, is there a reason for that, Mr. Shields, that this is the form that it went into the packet?
The, I think the view was that the planning commission had worked through changes on it in coordination, I think also with the city attorney and with the planning director to make sure the language was going to be as solid as possible as it went through. So I think it's both the planning commission's recommendation and the staff recommendation with the language as is here, with the key issue being for the council to work on being the date.
Let me...
But we can go back to that original language.
Let me try to, let me try to get to the crux of this, because I think this is where at least some members of the council may be going, and let me try to frame the question this way and have some discussion about it. I think when this came before us, we had significant discussion about the grandfathering section, and I think we all came to the conclusion at that point that a year time to let folks go through the process is what was envisioned. What I'm understanding now, based on some feedback that's been provided by the planning commission and also by the city attorney, is that one of the unintended consequences of that is essentially the way that the ordinance was drafted, is that you could go through the process, have everything signed off on with a year, but just sit on the property and not redevelop it, or do whatever your plans were forever, essentially. And that was the concern I think the planning commission was trying to address, that the city attorney was trying to address. I don't think that was an issue that the council took up or discussed, but I think it's worthwhile for us to have a discussion. I'll sort of start that discussion by saying that I, when we had that discussion, my thought was that you had a year to essentially complete the plans, demo, and begin rebuilding. That's sort of what I walked away from. Now, if that wasn't the intent, and members feel differently about it, if they understood it differently, I think we should have a discussion about it. But I do have a process question, but I want to talk first about the merits before we then jump into process, because I do think that we do have a process issue that needs to be discussed, but if we can just talk merits first and then figure out what the process is based on that. Vice Mayor Snyder?
I plan to, at the appropriate time, offer a motion that will include the old one-year effective date, so, and I think that reflects those who have spoken, and we can discuss it at that point, but I think we really ought to hear from the public before we talk about process issues. That would be my advice, and then we'll have a discussion on the merits and perhaps bring up process issues at that point, but I'm interested to hear what the public has to say.
Anything else before, so why don't we do this, then?
Mr. Mayor, also, I did, Councilman Pepe, I did want to point out, on the attachment, the letter that went to the citizens, the language that the council authorized at first reading is included on page one and page two, and it's also mentioned that where and when, people could make comments, as well as the possibility that the language could change or stay the same at the final reading of city council. So if you're looking for the original language advertised, it's on attachment, first page.
That's one of my issues, we set out to the people one thing, and you won't be voting on it. Even though we said it could change, you don't...
I just want to make sure you knew where that language was.
Yeah, that's helpful.
Okay.
Other council members? Why don't we go ahead and open this up for public comment before we take a motion, just so we can hear the public comment and then formulate accordingly based on the comments we receive? The first speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Vanny Lancaster. I'm sorry, that's missed. Followed by Ms. McCarthy.
Members of the council and honorable mayor, thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to comment on this. My husband and I moved to the City of Falls Church a couple of years ago, and we were shocked to receive this postcard-sized note saying that we own one of the substandard lots. We couldn't figure out why, and because we didn't think there was, that the lot was split, the county line of Arlington runs through the house. We pay taxes to both Arlington as well as the City of Falls Church. And also, just, I'm a little taken aback to hear that there was a packet sent. We did not receive the packet that lists the addresses and all the details that was mentioned, that was part of the package. My specific concerns are that the city take into consideration the impacts to those residents when there is either Fairfax County or Arlington line running through their property. We as such deal with a lot of permit issues between both those jurisdictions, et cetera, and with this, this is an added impact to us. Also, I heard that the Planning and Development Services communicated clearly on the impact. We didn't, as residents of the city, paying taxes to the city, we didn't receive all of that communication. And also, the split lot definition needs to be clearly spelled out, whether qualified with what the criteria are, and for development purposes, does that mean... with what the criteria are, and for development purposes, does that mean just new development or could it be extension of the existing property, either upward or horizontal? So with that said, we are very concerned as new members of this community. We take great pride in considering ourselves to be citizens of this community, and even though we pay 40% of our taxes to Arlington County. So we do urge the members of the council and honorable mayor to take all of this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker slip that I have is from Ms. MacArthur, followed by Mr. Jackson.
Dana MacArthur, 1005 A Lincoln Avenue. There are three words and one in particular of which I would like to focus my time. Falls Church City. City being the key word. We are not a town, nor are we a village. We pride ourselves in being called the little city. With the city comes density and housing in all forms. The original plans of the city allowed for such density to take place legally, knowing there would be a future increase in population and housing. We seem to be a city that cannot make up its mind. It is wrong of the city council and the corrupt working of the planning commission to continue down a path that will take property and property rights away from its citizens. Speaking of a comprehensive plan, planning director, I have not heard of one. The city has been sued multiple times by Mr. Mallor and others on the other side of this issue, and lost in the highest courts of our proud state, not once, but twice. My husband and I on the personal, took on the first personal financial burden to defend ourselves and the city, in knowing that we were right in our development rights and developing our property as we did and have been done by others. The courts had decided this issue and have supported the city zoning administrator and the city. It is now your time to support and uphold the citizens. With the change of this code, you're now swinging the pendulum in the other direction and will again set the city up for legal pressures and not only, of not only for the city, but of its citizens. You have won the case and have been supported and have supported your paid city staff in its decisions. It is wrong, and many of you stood by us during our personal undertaking, and were very supportive and knew to stay away from the topic until the courts have decided. Well, the courts have decided. And you have stayed, and you, as the voted council, should support our state and our local jurisdictions and their judicial decisions. These property owners pay more in taxes. Some have been impacted financially in defending their current rights. You will degrade their property value and cause citizens more financial burden in defending themselves again, but now from another perspective. If this stance is truly taken and voted in, whether in six months, a year, or ever, then maybe we need to change our name to the legal city, since we cannot seem to have our council, staff, and others make up their mind on this very important legal issue. We request again that you do not take on this change of code as recommended. You cannot continue to plan a city and only and take into its consideration the commercial aspects of our city, but also that, but not take into the personal property rights and land of our, of our personal citizens. By this, passing this, you will be taking away the rights and taking away property. Based on this issue and many others, as selected, as selected council by the people, you appoint the planning commission positions, of which we would like to request again, but this time as public record, that the chair of the planning commission, Ms. Melissa Teetz, be removed from this appointment as there is a clear conflict of interest. Our city continues to pay her for a service, and she is unable to look at most topics in a vested interest of all the citizens, but continues to be slanted in one way in her positions, as with the substandard lot and the moving of the implementation date of the recommended change, which is impossible to meet. It is sad that our planning commission does not know and are ignorant of the city's planning timeline and planning development. None of this can be implemented and taken into effect within six months. The conflict comes in for Ms. Teetz when the money that she is paid and her family are paid in the position, but yet her husband, Mr. Gordon Thies, or Dr. Gordon Thies, continues to speak, write, and petition openly against its citizens, which is wrong. Only any citizen serving more than, another thing is only any citizens, I'm so sorry, any citizen serving more than four years on the planning commission should be removed from their appointment and allow others a chance to serve the public with a clear, focused, and unbiased perspective. We wonder why our city has not yet formed a consistent character. It is due to the same personnel cycling themselves from one city board, commission, or council to the next. It is time for a fresh start for our little city. You're impacting small developers by allowing only a year and will only, again, not have a character, a city of character, but only one, where big builders will only be able to afford, and your city will look cookie cutter. Thank you again for your time, and we hope you truly consider the impact of your decisions this evening.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is Mr. Michael Jackson, followed by Mr. Strickland.
I'm Mike Jackson, I live at 801 Highland Avenue, and I'm on lots 14, 15, and 16, the corner of Walnut and Highland Avenue. And this decision makes an impact on me. It's taking my property rights away, and I'm opposed to that. And I'm also opposed to the language that you're demonizing these 40 by 120-foot lots, because at some point in the city's history, they were standard lots for some reason. And to give them a negative connotation and rile the city up that don't have a vested interest in this to support it is wrong. So I'm opposed to that. I want to, I also sent several emails to the clerk, which haven't been put on the record. I want to know if you're changing my legal description to one lot, and if that's going to impact my mortgage holder and have, force me to refinance because it's no longer the legal description of that lot, or if it's going to be sort of in limbo until I sell it and then have a hard time selling it because I don't have a legal description for it. So I want that answered before movement on this occurs. And, you know, those are my major points. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker slip that I have is Kevin Strickler, followed by Mr. Jeff Englander.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Strickler. I'm a native of Falls Church, and I'm a property owner who is affected by the proposed ordinance. I was here at the June 10th meeting, and I appreciate what the city council did to revise the ordinance to give a one-year time period to set vesting criteria for these lots. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the planning commission's recommendation to shorten the timeframe from one year to February 1st, 2014, and to tighten up on the vesting criteria. This is too short of a time period, and I would hope that the city council would not change the timeframe from what has been advertised to the public and sent out to the property owners. Many would be opposed if they only knew about these last-minute proposed changes. In addition, making vesting contingent on approved plans could result in persons filing plans in time but simply not receiving city approval before the deadline. I call your attention to line 190, where the words "and approved by the city" have been added. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is Mr. Jeff Englander, followed by Ms. Lewis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jeff Englander. I live at 523 Timber Lane, here in our great city. And as full disclosure, I was a member of the planning commission in the mid-'90s through the early '2000s. I recommend that we support this, the ordinance this evening. And the reason is this, is that I, as a member of the commission, and I'll take another point of view, that what you heard earlier this evening, many developers have had an opportunity to take a look at the zoning code, they've become masters at it, and they've also become masters at working around whatever, you know, the requirements that are in the zoning code. It was amazing to me during my six years on the commission, how many times developer would come to us and say, "We got a workaround." That workaround, I love that term, workaround. That's what this is. This is a workaround. It's not a property right. And I ask you to support this ordinance. If indeed you'd like to have this workaround become a property right, then I ask you to write that specifically into the zoning code. And I ask you that specifically, listen to the people here tonight, if you want to have this, then I ask you to specifically write it into the code. Don't allow people, anyone, applicants, whomever, to work around the code. It makes it very difficult for us, for the members of the commission, members of staff, to get through many, many plans. And so, in essence, I ask you tonight to support it, the ordinance. Feel free, if it goes into effect next August, it should be plenty of time for people who are in the process now to complete their plans. February is probably also probably more than enough time for those people already in the process to complete. But, you know, I'll listen to the people who are here, and I'll support them. If they wish to have it done by August, that's fine by me, and I will support that. But I ask that you support the ordinance tonight for that one very specific reason. The zoning code is highly complicated text. All you have to do is read it. It took me many, many, many months to really understand it, just to understand it. Workarounds are tough, and it makes the zoning code that much tougher to enforce. And so to that end, if you want to have this so-called right, which I do believe it's not a right, then write it into the code. You are the governing body. Feel free to do so. But in the meantime, this ordinance needs to pass. I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is Ms. Lewis.
I'm Pamela Bunting Lewis, and my last residence of co-ownership here in the City of Falls Church was at 311 Riley Street. And I pick up the paper whenever I return to a town I've lived in, or whenever I'm traveling, and I've been in 11 states and four cities over the last 27 months. So I'm here this evening and read through the paper, and you had my favorite topics, development, the environment, and water. Seems to be a common theme in almost every town I'm in these days. I've been writing and doing things to affect positive changes since 1989, and my late uncle Frank Bunting once had an office here in the City of Falls Church for the Baltimore Sun. So we go back a long way with Falls Church. I was invited to move into the City of Falls Church by Sue and Paul Whitney. Sue Whitney used to teach with me in Fairfax County, later became a government mediator, and Paul Whitney was officer friendly at Georgia Mason High School and a part of your police force. When I purchased 311 Riley Street, I'd had a house in North Reston, which was a rather large Williamsburg colonial. And we bought it, it was a time of separation and divorce. This was to have always been my home. We purchased 311 Riley Street for $194,900, and three years later, court ordered sold for $189,000. So while everything was booming in Falls Church or getting ready to, I lost $5,000 on my property. So as I came through from time to time on my travels, I would notice that my property had changed. And it's a little bit different than what you have in your comprehensive plan discussion. You're talking about 3.78 units per acre. So those are the smaller units, whereas I believe I had approximately a half an acre. But now there's a very large house where my one, my smaller house once, once was. So it was torn down, leveled, and now a very large house is on the same street, which changes the character quite a bit. The perspective I'm offering on this is that when you have a community of character, such as the City of Falls Church, other people live on the street, other people live in the environment, other people are breathing the air, and I do notice a difference in the air quality. There's been a lot of development here in the City of Falls Church. I also, within my family in the Delaware Beach area, my cousin is now one of the largest property owners in Dewey Beach, which is going from small cottages to larger beach houses, while the water table is rising on the Rehoboth Bay. So we're dealing with the same issues there. The other thing that I wanted to add to this was, at the time, I returned to my hometown, which was Newark, Delaware. I was dealing with a partition to partition on a house I was to inherit, had a $200,000 loss for me. And also dealing with development of our Newark Country Club, about the time when I think Atlantic Realty was probably getting ready to develop here, was at the time of the subprime lending, when it first came to the attention that people were going to lose money on that. And it was me who went before the city council there and said, you know, "Subprime lending's going to be a real problem. I don't think this development's a good idea of the Newark Country Club."
So if I can ask you to wrap up, I just heard the buzzer go off.
I will. And the next meeting, it was out the door, and the development was halted. They did not develop it. Now it's up again for the same situation you're in now with Atlantic Realty. That's just a perspective.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker slip that I have is from Joe Randow, I believe.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I want to bring up a couple of topics. First was, as you guys were mentioning earlier, process and basically the new amended ordinance that was presented to you today by the planning commission. Quick background, my name's Joey Randow. I run an architectural and construction firm in McLean. I'm also resident of the City of Falls Church. Well, I've built, designed and built over 20 houses in the city over the last four years. Some have been substandard, but most on standard lots. The issue I have, just from an architect and a builder's perspective, on the amended ordinance that was given to you is it's, it's not doable if someone would want to sell their lots to two people, they're substandard lots. First, it was brought down from one year to six months. So basically, we're saying from the day this is passed, we have six months to get it. And now the new thing is an approved site and grading plan, not have it submitted, but actually has to be approved. So if we, timeline-wise, you go, you need one month to design your house with the architect. You need one month with the civil engineers to do your site and grading plan, the artist to do the landscape plan, to do your demolition plan, all that kind of stuff. So you have two months down, and everything gets submitted to the city, that's as fast as you could possibly do it, to the city. City typically takes three to four months to get everything approved on your site and grading plan. Usually you have two submissions, and you have to wait two weeks for your Seabert, and you have to pay your bonds and everything else. So that's four months, plus your two months already. So we're at six months, as if you started to, if someone sold the house, their properties, tomorrow, you have six months already down. And then you have to demolish your house, which takes two weeks. And that's, this is all, so that's over six months already, and that's if no one appeals your site and grading plan. If anyone's ever built substandard lots here, they always get appealed. That's why you guys are trying to take care of this problem, I think, for owners and builders today. And then what would happen is someone appeals your site and grading plan, then you're outside of that, you know, six-months timeframe. And that's the reason the planning commission changed all these things, because they don't want anyone building these houses. I don't own, I, I live on a substandard lot, but I don't own a lot that can be sold, you know, to lots. So I don't have any real fight in this. I just wanted to present this information to you, that as if you pass what's presented by the planning commission to you today, it's absolutely impossible for someone to sell their lot, lots and build on it. The original one that was sent out to everybody, that is doable. You have one year to just find a buyer, you have time to design a unique house to get the plans done, and then you can submit them to the city. We have owner or builder, architect has no control on how long the city takes to approve plans. So when you have a variable timeframe like that, it's not very fair, I think, on that. The way to solve that problem is saying, hey, the, these plans are good forever. Just put a time limit on it. Say demolition plan's good for one year, or the site and grading plan's good for one year. And that way you have to build your house within that year, but it's not a way that you're going to get in trouble. That was the process that we were talking about, so I'm done with that. Now to the whole situation of a substandard lot. I think there's some misconception on what these substandard lots are. Everyone, when we say substandard, you're thinking of the 40-foot-wide lots that have been built near Mr. Mallor's house, and, you know, Art and I have built some, and everyone, those, those 40-foot-wide lots... Everyone, those 40-foot-wide lots with 24-foot-wide houses. There's also, substandard is anything under the, in the R1B zoning, under 60 feet wide. If you have a lot that's 58 feet wide or that's a little bit under the 7,500 square feet, or it could be way over the 7,500 square feet lot limit, but just one foot short on the frontage, it's considered substandard. One example is on Lincoln Avenue, we built two houses for two custom clients at 605. That whole block from, that's Great Falls Street and Lincoln Avenue. Am I done?
It's time.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Are there any members of the public that wish to address counsel additionally on this item? Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close public comments on this issue and open it up for any questions council members have and discussion as well. And then, we'll talk about a motion. Vice Mayor Snyder.
Yeah, I want to get some answers to some of the questions that the citizens have raised this evening. Let me start through, really from the beginning here. So, a question about the lot that straddles Arlington and the City of Falls Church. There was some concern expressed by one of our citizens about that. Can you address that concern, Mr. Snyder and city attorney?
I don't know the specific lot. But when you have a split jurisdiction, you have different zoning in one jurisdiction from the other. There is not an R1A or an R1B zone, for example, in Arlington. And in Fairfax, the residential zoning categories are different. So, those would have to be looked at individually and determined which jurisdiction would, which rules would govern. John?
I think that would have to be done on a case-by-case basis, Mr. Snyder. I think as a general matter, though, unless, you know, the properties that are split have frontage in the City of Falls Church and, you know, the majority of the lots are in the city, I don't think that this amendment is going to apply to those lots. But again, that's just as a general statement. It's going to be very fact-dependent on exactly the configuration of the lots and where the boundary line lies.
Okay. And would you be willing to meet with Ms. Lancaster to discuss this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Good. All right. That's point number one. Point number two, a number of our citizens raised questions about property rights. And obviously, we're all very concerned about property rights. So, I wonder, Mr. City Attorney, if you could discuss that issue for us.
Certainly. I've looked very closely at that issue since this proposed amendment was first brought up at first reading. There's been claims made this evening, as well as in other forums, about, you know, alleged takings that would occur if this amendment were approved. I've looked very closely at the case law on that. And my conclusion is that this amendment would not be a taking. The Supreme Court of Virginia and the Supreme Court of the United States have both been very clear that for a taking to occur, a property owner has to be denied of all economic use of his property. And this amendment would not deprive an owner of all economic use. The owner would still be able to construct one single-family home on the two substandard lots. And that would be a reasonable economic use of the property.
The third issue was the timing, the six months or a year. And I'm not detecting any support from the comments so far for reducing that amount. So, I'm not sure we need any questions there. There were some questions that were raised about beyond the change of the timing, the other changes proposed by the Planning Commission. And if we wanted to, we could approve the ordinance that was enacted on first reading. Is that right? With the August 1, 2014, and no other change? Is that right?
I mean, the city council could do, does have flexibility here. The city council could adopt the ordinance that was approved by the city council on first reading. That's option one. Option two, the city council could adopt, in part, the recommended version from the Planning Commission, with the one change being to go back to the original one-year period on the date. Again, those are all policy decisions, really, for city council. Legally, there's no prohibition on you either reverting to the first reading ordinance that you'd approved or adopting the changes that were recommended by the Planning Commission. The two substantive changes recommended by the Planning Commission, just, you know, to be clear, are at lines 136 of the staff report. This is at paragraph two, where a grading plan not only has to be submitted, but it has to be approved by the city. And then, further at lines 141, when a demolition permit is applied for, the structure actually has to be demolished for the property owner to qualify for the grandfather provision. I think as Mr. Snyder indicated and the Mayor Baruch indicated, the concern, as I understood it, that was driving that was that without those proposed changes, property owners could, you know, get a grading plan submitted, get a demolition permit in hand, and then sit on them for indefinite amount of time without taking action. So...
Not an expiration date on demolition permit?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Pepe.
We could impose one if we wanted to.
You could through separate code action. That's correct.
Other council members? Vice Mayor, any other questions?
Yeah, there was one question raised about the applicability to this to expanding a property up or horizontally. I think that was another question that we received. This doesn't really relate, it doesn't restrict, as I understand it, it doesn't restrict tearing down or rebuilding even a larger house on the property, provided that it otherwise complies with the setbacks and other elements of the zoning code, right?
That's absolutely correct, yes, sir.
So, the value of the property could be significantly increased by replacing the home that's there, expanding it, or whatever. And none of that, none of that ability is affected by this in any way. Again, provided that it's otherwise in compliance with other elements of the zoning code. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, significant value is still possible, value added, even after this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Other council members? Mr. Pepe?
And I'll preface the questions by saying, you know, it's, I understand from the comments we heard earlier, this argument has been going on for decades. So, this is not a new problem, contrary to what some people have said. And I will confess, right off the bat, I live in one of these houses. It was built on one of these lots, and that's why I'm familiar with it, though I didn't know it at the time. So, I know it goes back at least that far, because my house was built in '03, which meant the approvals had to be in '01 or '02 or sometime around then. So, it had to predate then. So, this is not a new problem. And the reason we have this problem is because people want to live in Falls Church City. We would not have this problem if people didn't want to buy these houses in the first place. And I think that's something we're losing sight of here. There is a place in the market for this, and there are people who did that. I know in our case, we couldn't afford one of the big houses in the nice part of town. So, we bought one of these houses because it gave us the room we wanted in a place we could afford or we could walk to the metro. So, there are a variety of interests here. I'm a little concerned that a lot of what I've heard of the dialogue, and that's why I want to get to some specific questions, have more to do with a small group of people who seem to have an agenda, and they seem to care more about winning this fight than actually addressing the merits of this case. And the comments I hear are consistent like that, because I see the same people show up time and time again, raising the same arguments. And that's why I want to ask some questions about the arguments, because I'm having trouble understanding them. City attorney has said that legally, there is no taking. And I want to clarify that, because I think technically, and tell me if I'm wrong, there's a taking, but it's a legal taking. And the court says you don't have to pay people for it.
I can just reiterate what I said a minute ago. And that is that the, both at the federal level, the US Supreme Court, as well as the Virginia Supreme Court, have said that a taking only occurs if a property owner is denied all economic use of the property. And so, you know, that my conclusion, you know, is a firm and a clear one that this proposed amendment is not a taking.
Okay. Well, whether it's a taking or not, if you have someone who's got a lot worth several hundred thousand dollars extra and you take away a couple hundred thousand dollars from a resident, in my book, that's a taking. And I'm a lawyer, so I know the legal description of taking may be different. But the reality is, you're taking away a whole lot of money from a bunch of our citizens, because some other citizens think that we shouldn't have these kinds of houses here. And I think what the council has to weigh is, is it appropriate, whether it's legal or not, to take away a whole lot of money from people, whether they even knew they had it or not? Just because somebody doesn't know they have something, taking it away from them doesn't become right, because they didn't know they had it and found out later on. So, I've got some concerns about that, and that's what I raised last time. I think I've got some moral issues with doing that. Separate from that, the specific arguments, and the only reasons I've heard to actually do this, I've heard some people say, well, it's not consistent with a plan that some people do or don't know. And there hasn't been an underlying reason. It's just, well, it's in the plan, so you have to do what's in the plan. Secondly, the only argument I've heard that seems to have any kind of credence has to do with people saying, well, there's extra stormwater runoff and extra environmental issues. But the questions I have is, don't we already have regulations on maximum lot coverage and on the runoff that's allowed to come from new development when that much land is disturbed? Don't they have to pass? That's why we have grading plans and site plans? And if that's not the case, I'd be curious why we haven't attacked it at that level, rather than jumping to this macro level. It seems to me a government ought to do something that doesn't take away as much from the people when it's addressing something, if it can solve a problem that way, versus jumping to a broader way to do it.
Other council members?
Well, that's a question. I mean, don't we already have rules regulating runoff? Are you allowed to put more runoff out after you develop a property?
We have rules for properties, and they apply the same way. I would also say that the amount of development for one house on these lots is the same amount of coverage, building coverage.
That was the other question.
And impervious coverage. So, the ability to actually develop property with one house is not diminished in the sense of total coverage, building, or impervious area.
Right.
It's a question of how many dwelling units.
And having setbacks, also, you could end up with less coverage than you would have with one big house, I would think, with some of the setback requirements.
The coverage is pretty much, you have equal amount of building and coverage. You actually have, you have a little different side yard setbacks with the substandard lots than you do with the other lot. So, the perimeter will be larger on a single development than with two developments. The total square footage could be the same.
It's helpful to hear, because I know across the street from me, there were two large houses built that had much more roofline than the two houses they built on the same size lot on our side. So, that's not a given. So, we have those kind of rules. The other argument I hear, and this is what came in a lot of the emails, people say, well, we don't have it because we can't allow more kids in our schools. And frankly, as far as I know, that's a violation of the federal housing laws. I don't know if it violates anything in Virginia, but we can't base decisions solely on familial status and how many kids they're going to bring with them, would be my understanding. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. But I would stress that I didn't see anything in the staff report.
No, I'm talking about public comment. That's where I heard.
And as I think you, as the city council understands and the staff understands, we cannot control what individual members of the public may say in their petitions to you or, you know, in other forums. What we can control is the reasons that staff have cited for the amendment, which as I understand it, center, as you said, Mr. Pepe, on comprehensive plan requirements and the need to make sure that the density levels in that comprehensive plan are consistent in these neighborhoods. And anyway, I hope I've answered your question.
Okay. Now, that's helpful. The last part I had, and I know this from when I served on the school board, a lot of the growth in the school system, assuming you have abilities to regulate certain kinds of growth, come from infill. And as far as I know, it's not coming from infill in these lots. There haven't been that many of these houses built. Most of the numbers I saw were from other places in town where houses were torn down and one large house was put in its place. So, if that's the issue, I don't think this resolves that question either, based on our experience. I don't know if you guys have anything to the contrary on that. But that, those are, that's the data I saw from that point. Those are my questions.
If I can just, before I pass it to other council members, I just want to ask one follow-up question. This gets back to some of the environmental issues. I believe that we received some comments, and this goes to something that Mr. Snyder mentioned about sort of what the perimeter of the lots would look like when there's two houses built versus one house. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that when there's two houses built, the perimeter is smaller besides setbacks and what that looks like versus if one larger house was built, even though the coverage size would be the same. The next assumption that I have is the type of plantings, trees, et cetera, that you could do is going to be varied. And we know the type of tree canopy you have is also tied to how we're managing stormwater. So, I think that starts to get into the margin of issues. While I think it's right that the stormwater coverage area is the same, there are going to be instances with what can be done on the site as far as tree coverage, canopy is going to be different. And that's extremely hard to predict, given the number of lots that are involved. Sort of, and that gets us into the weeds in an area that I don't think we can really measure at this point. But I do think it's important to note that they are not necessarily equal as far as what happens with stormwater, that there are going to be some impacts in stormwater, even though the runoff, or I'm sorry, the surface coverage is potentially the same. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. Other council members? Ms. Barry?
I think the importance of this conversation and the discussions that have gone on, as many council members have said and members of the public have said for years now, for possibly decades, is that we're driving towards clarity. And I have to say, we're driving towards clarity. We're having a little trouble getting there. I mean, I certainly want to signal to anybody who's interested that I, it is my intention to vote in the affirmative on this with the hopes that Mr. Snyder will offer a friendly amendment and bring us back to a 2014 date, an August 2014 date. What I think we're trying to do here, and what I hope is accomplished by passing this, is that we obviate any confusion from here on out. I don't, I don't believe, I don't come to the same conclusions that Mr. Pepe does with regard to takings. I accept Mr. Foster's interpretation. Proud to say I am not a lawyer, one of the few here on council who isn't. And let me also be clear about the extension of the date. I am under no illusion that by extending it another six months, we're not going to have last-minute concerns, confusion, somebody is going to say, I had no idea this was coming. That's going to happen. People don't, you know, will not understand it until the deadline is, you know, draws nigh. So, I think it is, it's fair and it's reasonable to give people a deadline. I understand certainly why now, thank you, why the Planning Commission had wanted to move it forward. I think it's a, it's a, it's a small gesture that council can take on, I think, a very, a very big issue. So, you know, again, it seems to me that it signals this council's intent to bring this to closure and to, and to send a strong signal to developers and to residents of the intent and the framework with which this is going to move forward. So, that's how I come out on this issue.
Other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me offer a couple of perspectives. First of all, I have immense respect for the arguments made on all sides of this and all of our citizens. This is exactly where you don't want to be as a public official with a community that is so divided over an issue. I was very slow to take action on this, because my hope was that there would have been some resolution, either through mediation or through administrative action. Unfortunately, that has not occurred. So, it comes to us to have to clarify this ordinance. Everyone has said, regardless of where you are in the issue, you want clarity, so that expectations can be formed, people can take various actions, developers can develop, and whatever. So, the first point that I would make is, everything else has failed to resolve this. So, it has become a legislative matter, and we simply have to deal with it. That's point number one. Point number two on the issue of taking, while I respect different views on this, I think we've already heard the city attorney say, as a matter of law, it's not a taking. And I would challenge whether, as a matter of fact, it is necessarily a taking either, because the construction of a significantly larger house may add significant value to that which is there, indeed, as much or more than two small houses on two adjoining lots. I would add one other argument. There are people here who own large, substandard lots, but there are only one. They don't have the right to divide that lot and put two houses on it. So, I view this as equalling the playing field, not going the other way. The next point I would make is, I've received... The next point I would make is I've received and reviewed very carefully the letters from the opponents of this ordinance. Some, as we've heard tonight and other times, want us to vote this down. Others have said that while I may prefer that, I want you to expand the time so it's reasonable, so I can make the decisions that I need to make. And so for that reason, I'm strongly supportive of the original timeframe made specifically August 1, So I don't want to be here. I looked at options. I've had a number of personal communications. I've read every email, every letter. I've tried to listen very closely. I think the majority of this community supports the action we're taking. And I do not, I believe that the city attorney has said it is not a taking as a matter of law. I do not accept that it's necessarily a taking as a matter of fact. In some ways, I believe that this was a result of an administrative interpretation that created a loophole that was never intended. And I think we are giving everyone an opportunity to exercise whatever they care to do in terms of their own personal decision-making over the course of the next year. And I will say this, regardless of how I vote on this tonight, if in the interim someone can come forward with something that resolves this issue without, and truly brings this entire community together, I'm more than anxious to listen to that. But I've not heard it so far, and after three or four years of incredible debate, I've not heard that come forward either. So I think unfortunately, whether we like it or not, we've got to act. All sides have said they want some clarity, and that's what we're doing tonight. Am I entirely satisfied with it? Absolutely not. Am I anxious to work with all members of the community going forward to see if there's something better? Absolutely. But for right now, we need to take this action, and therefore I'll be voting as will be indicated. Thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Callen?
When I lived in Arlington, I had a lot that had been zoned for three homes. And after I moved in, the zoning laws were changed, and I couldn't do anything with them, even though it was zoned for three lots. So I took a $500,000 to $600,000 hit for that. That having been said, and with great, I mean, we share your pain, Dave, regarding the way this has turned out, I will support the one-year you know, timeframe, but it's with, it took a lot of anguish, and I think everybody is really uneasy about it and wish we could do better. But I've been at the other end of it, and so in spite of that, I support the change.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, and thank you for all of your comments, because as most people know, I'm open to persuasion on this. I've talked, as Vice Mayor Snyder said, with both sides, listened, and I believe that the arguments on both sides have merit. The economic, environmental arguments have been talked about tonight. There's an aesthetic argument that you hear made a lot. You know, I end up feeling that neither side has a really slam dunk compelling case to make on any three of those. And so for me, it's really a matter of process. The administrative process that we've used in recent years just doesn't seem to be working. It's not illegal. It's not inappropriate. Everyone is acting in good faith, but the community just does not seem to accept it. So the only thing I'm sure of is that we have to act tonight. And that leads me to my question, what are we actually acting on? Are we going to allow a year, and are we going to revert to the language that was just handed out on the table about the grading permits and demolition, or is this some hybrid? I just, I need to know what it is that I think that I'm going to vote for.
I think that's what we're discussing and trying to get a sense from council members about. So let me try to offer my two cents and then gauge some reaction from council members. You know, I think this is an issue that's certainly been talked about and discussed and even brought to formal actions certainly well before my time on the city council. So I think that there's been a lot of community discussion about it. I think that there is a need for clarity one way or the other on this. The one issue that I'll just briefly address is this notion of taking and expectations. I think there's two sides of that coin. We do have members of the community who feel that they bought into an area with a certain view of what density was going to be like in a community, and it didn't pan out that way because of zoning interpretations, et cetera. So I don't think it's as clear-cut to say, "Well, we're viewing that something has been taken away," because I think some members of the community feel that their lots and their enjoyment of their lots and the density that they thought they would have in their neighborhoods is different. So I don't want to get into, you know, judging necessarily what's, who's right and who's wrong. I think both perspectives have valid points on that notion. But I think it's more important to focus in on the merits of the argument and what we see and what we want the community to look like, and whether this change is being proposed is consistent with our comprehensive plan such as it is. And I think that this is a change that tries to bring our zoning or an aspect of our zoning in conformance with our comp plan. And I think our zoning should start at the comp plan. It's an issue that I've raised numerous times, so I'm glad to see that we're actually taking an action to bring zoning into compliance with the comp plan and not vice versa. I think that's a good way to go, so I would encourage council members that we do this moving forward, rather than changing the comp plan to meet a particular issue or a particular goal, because it is supposed to be our guiding document. And then two, I do think that there is some, while there may be marginal improvements that this is going to have on our stormwater management side as well, as I've tried to lay out in my comments before. So if a motion were to be put forward to essentially taking this language back to the one-year period, I would certainly support it. The one aspect of that that has certainly come to mind since we took action a few weeks ago on first reading is this notion that there wouldn't be any time period set for members of the community who wish to take advantage of the grandfathering clause to essentially bring their plans to fruition. So what I'd be interested in is exploring whether we can put a time period in. So you essentially would have a year to put everything, get your plans together, sell your property, do the architectural drawings, gain the city approvals, et cetera. But there would be a time period by which you would actually have to implement it, rather than you could wait 20 years. And to do that, I think one of our citizens suggested, well, didn't necessarily suggest it, but pointed out that that would be one way of handling it. I don't believe he advocated for it, but but alluded to that that could be one measure that we could take. I do see a problem with the action that we took, and that essentially says, as long as you've got everything out there.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, Ron.
One option would be to use the original language for the whole thing, except you could add something to the end that says "A demolition permit has..." See, here's the issue with the "applied for" versus "received." The "received" is in the control of the city.
Correct.
I'm not saying the city would play games, but who knows who's going to be around that? Somebody could drag their feet, and then we're going to be right back in court again. So you're not going to get the certainty. So I don't have a problem adding some kind of time limit of once the permit is received, you then have to act on it within a certain amount of time. It's just you can't dictate the approvals on the grading. And frankly, people don't want to go ahead and demolish the thing until they've got all the approvals in place, because they don't know if the deal's going to fall apart or not. That's so that's why it has to happen in that.
Perhaps one option, Ron, would be to add how long the demolition permit is valid for. That could be one way that we could handle that. Mr. Foster, do you know what the code said about demolition permits right now, or Mr. Snyder?
I think that Mr. Pepe's solution may be a cleaner solution, and that is we simply add on to the end of the ordinance, or the original first reading ordinance, the language that he had suggested.
I think you put some appropriate time limit after receipt of the permit would be how you'd have to word it. Might need a little help with the wording.
And so the question is, what would the time period be? Would you want it to be, you know, within six months of receipt of the demolition permit, three months? I mean, that's up to you. And that's the concern. I don't know sitting here, because I didn't know this was going to be an issue, how, whether there's any deadline for someone to demo a home under the current code. You know, I know that demolition permits are the same as building permits, and that with building permits, there's no real deadline, so long as, you know, you're pounding one nail per, you know, per year. So that could just go on indefinitely.
Mr. Snyder, do you know if there is a...
I believe Mr. Foster's correct. There is no specific sunset on these, as long as someone is actively pursuing the permit. So if you wanted to have a drop dead date, if you will, on the demolition of something, that would be a, that could be added as part of this language.
And I would say the clocks just start ticking once they receive the permit. That's what I was suggesting, because then it's I'm looking at the code here, and I don't, I'm having a hard time seeing.
That's certainly what my intent would be about that, and I would just say, you know, publicly that, you know, I don't want to get into endless cycles of demolition permits being reissued, so for the purposes of legislative history such as it is, I just want to be clear. Certainly, my intent would be you get one go around at it, that filing a new demolition permit somehow doesn't keep extending it, and you can drag out this process.
I think one way to do that could be to add language such as the following at the end of three on the original language. "A demolition permit for the house has been applied for, and demolition of the house under that permit has occurred within some time period."
Is anybody going to name a time?
That really is a question for you all, how long?
I guess we're trying to get a sense of how long it takes once you get the permit, because a lot of people don't want to make the plans until they get it. How long does it take to go out there, get a contractor, and do it? Assuming a busy season and weather.
It could be done very quickly. It could depend on weather and other kinds of conditions, you know, if you're in the middle of winter or, you know, just had a derecho or something like that.
Mr. Snyder, based on your experience in the planning office, do six months sound about reasonable?
I think six months, anyone should be able to get that. You're through two seasons at least, so seasonal issues should not be a problem.
So I propose six months.
Where would you put it?
That would be, it'd be the original language.
130.
So 131, you would add the clause that Mr. Snyder just read. I don't know.
And demolition of the house has occurred under that permit within six months of issuance.
Can we get that one more time, so Vice Mayor Snyder has it, because I think he's going to offer something else?
And demolition of the house has occurred under that permit within six months of issuance. Does that do it?
Yeah.
Council members, anything else on this before we bring a motion forward?
Mr. Mayor, for the reasons stated.
And before we go there, just so I can address a policy issue or a process issue, I would just ask staff, this has been, I think, very difficult for council members to say the least, when we've had, when we're taking on a major issue and there's planning commission recommendations. If we can just have the original resolution, and if there's a recommendation that's in the packet, and we can debate two competing resolutions rather than trying to do this with the dais, I would just implore staff that we not do this again. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TO 13-16 as was approved on first reading on June 10, 2013, with the addition of online, beginning on the end of line 130, comma, and demolition has occurred under the permit within six months of issuance.
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second? Any questions that remain? Ms. Berry?
I wanted to make certain, I think Mr. Snyder said "that permit," and I just want to make sure that the intent of that language is, we are talking about the original demolition permit.
Yes, ma'am.
That is the one, okay, just so that is supposed to be.
That means that.
That means that.
Okay, so the city clerk, let's make sure the city clerk has it right.
Maybe I'm a lawyer at heart.
I wouldn't, yeah. Stick with what you are.
So I have at the end of line 130, "and demolition occurs under that permit within six months of issuance."
Yeah, and demolition has occurred under that permit within six months of issuance. Yeah? Mr. City Attorney?
I think that that gets it there. One suggestion I would make, demolition has been completed under that permit within six months, because, again, thinking like a lawyer, if I'm on the other side, I'm going to say, "Well, demolition occurred because it started, but it hasn't been completed." So demolition has been completed under the permit within six months of issuance.
There's no way the city can come in and play games and say, "Well, you left the block there, it's been completed, so it's..."
Mr. Pepe, your mic.
I just want to rule out the chance of folks playing games. You know, is it, does that still leave it open, or does the city have some say at that point about, does the city come out and say it's complete, or is that something that doesn't happen under a permit? What's the normal process?
I believe the demolition is monitored by city inspectors.
Yes.
Guess we'll have to trust our city officials.
Okay, so let me try again. Let me make a motion again. I move approval of TO 13-16 in...
I want to make sure that it's proper, Dave, if I may. Can we pull the motion that was on the table and sub this in, please?
Sure. How do you want to proceed?
Was the motion seconded?
Yeah, it was seconded. That's the problem.
You actually have to amend it.
So I would actually, we would need to amend it, and then...
Addment to the motion.
Can it be withdrawn?
It could be withdrawn, or somebody up on the dais could make a motion. I hear by move to amend Mr. Snyder's motion.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do it that way or move to withdraw. I think it's cleaner if we withdraw it and then start over again. So if I can get a motion to withdraw...
Mr. Mayor, I move to withdraw the amendment.
If I can withdraw the motion.
Hmm?
Move to withdraw the motion.
Oh, the entire motion. "Mr. Mayor, I move to withdraw the motion."
If I can get a second on that, please?
Sure, a second.
Vice Mayor Snyder, do I need a roll call?
It's a voice vote.
Voice vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, let's start over again.
"Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TO 13-16 in the form approved on first reading on June 10, 2013, with the following amendment on, at the end of line 130. And demolition has been completed under that permit within six months of its issuance."
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. Any questions? I just have one question that I just want to make sure is on the record. The city attorney, I just want to confirm that we can make these changes between first and second reading without going back to first reading.
You can, Mr. Mayor. We had a case in 2008 involving the Hilton Hotel that's now being constructed that went to Arlington County Circuit Court. One issue that was raised by the opponents challenging the approval of that hotel was that on a zoning issue, that the city council could not make changes between first and second reading, and the court ruled very clearly that under our city charter, zoning is different from the standard ordinance, and that there is much more flexibility for city council to make changes between first and second reading with respect to a zoning ordinance amendment than there is with any other ordinance amendment. And so the answer is yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is this ironclad? Is there any hardship avenue that anyone can go through? I'm thinking of neighborhoods where the aesthetic horse has already left the barn. I mean, basically, houses have been built. The outliers are the remaining older single-family 1950s houses that straddle two lots. Would someone living in such a lot who wanted a house, who wanted to develop it, have no recourse once we pass this to do anything other than what's outlined here?
Under the amendment as approved, they would have the ability to, as we discussed, develop the two substandard lots as a single lot. Several members of council have articulated that that actually may be worth more, given the size of the home that would be built. That's number one. Number two, there is a variance that is available for any property owner in this locality, in any locality. If they are truly suffering a hardship, they can apply for a variance to the BCA. But I want to stress, aesthetics alone, under Virginia law, is not enough to justify a variance. They're going to have to be able to show, again, that without the variance being approved, they would be deprived of all reasonable use of the property, and that's a pretty high standard to meet.
Okay, thank you. If I can have their roll call vote, please.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Okay.
Mr. Pepe?
Reluctantly in the spirit of compromise, yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Tartar? Mr. Tartar's recused himself. Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
The ma, the motion passes.
Thank you. All right, Veronica, if we can have the second reading. Or, I'm sorry, the next reading of the next item, please.
TO thirteen dash nineteen is an ordinance to amend chapter thirty personnel of the Code of the City of Falls Church to expand the duties of the city's retirement board to include investment oversight of the city's other post-employment benefits funds.
Richard.
Happy Monday, council. Before you, this TO thirteen dash nineteen, which we believe is, uh, helping with operational efficiency and investment. What we're doing is we are, um, asking the pension board or the retirement board to take on the responsibilities of the OPEB committee and to handle its investments. Um, we've discussed this at work session and I'll be happy to answer any further questions that might have come up since then.
Any questions, council? All right, if I can, uh, get a motion, then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Mr. Kalen?
Nineteen, ordinance to amend city charter personnel of the Code of the City of Falls Church to expand the duties of the city's retirement board to include investment oversight of the city's other post...
No, just, uh, the proposed motion is listed there.
Move to adopt TO, dash, TO thirteen dash nineteen first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for August twelfth, twenty thirteen, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second on the motion, please.
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. Like to open this item up for public comment. Not seeing anybody come forward and didn't receive any speaker slips on this. Veronica, did we receive any written comments on this? I'm gonna go ahead and close this up for public comment. Counsel, anything before we take a vote? Mr. Kalen?
I'd just like to express my strong support of this, uh, ordinance. I believe that while the current task force or the current members or trustees, if you like, are doing as well as they can, the retirement board has a professional asset manager, manager, and expect that the returns, uh, will reflect the fact that it's a much larger, uh, amount of money that asset allocation and that this will be a, a net benefit to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Ms. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yeah.
Mr. Pepe?
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tartar?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
If we can have the reading of this next item, please.
TO thirteen dash eighteen is an ordinance to create chapter thirty-five Stormwater, Article One Stormwater Management of the City of Falls Church City Code, to clarify and reorganize existing stormwater management regulation to add new language required by the state of Virginia.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Baruch, members of council, Jason Whitstrom, our civil engineer, uh, who oversees our stormwater programs, will provide a staff report. This was discussed at work session last week, but for the benefit of the public, this is an important ordinance, uh, for the city to implement state policy, uh, much of which is in this ordinance is a state mandate, um, where localities across Virginia are carrying out, uh, the, this, uh, the Chesapeake Bay, uh, regulations that are, um, enacted by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Um, Mr. Whitstrom's report will, uh, note some of the questions that were asked by council, including one question about the, the difference between the state mandate and what the ordinance is, uh, that's before the councils. The council is, is aware of the policy choices, uh, with respect to the ordinance. Mr. Whitstrom?
Good evening, Mayor Baruch, members of council. It's my pleasure to bring TO thirteen eighteen tonight, um, which is an ordinance to create chapter thirty-five Stormwater. This is, uh, as Wyatt stated, um, something that we're doing to clarify, like, to clarify and reorganize existing stormwater management regulations here in the city and also to bring some of the state mandate, um, stormwater regulations to our code. Um, you may recall, at the city council work session on the fifteenth of July, um, I provided a PowerPoint, uh, presentation to talk about some of the details in this, and that is now online on Granicus for those who want to view that. Um, again, the main driver of this ordinance is the state mandate to adopt more stringent stormwater regulations. Um, we've taken this opportunity to streamline some of our own city code, um, from the zoning, and I'll, I'll get into a little bit more detail, but it's from the zoning code, um, which is chapter forty-eight and from chapter fourteen, which is the environment, our erosion and sediment control. Um, a little bit of house, a little bit of house clea, uh, cleaning and, uh, clarifying some existing code for illicit discharge. So I, in my staff report, I outlined, uh, four different areas, uh, that were really important to, to get across that this ordinance, ordinance accomplishes. The first of which, as I kind of mentioned, was the reorganization, um, specifically the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Overlay District, which is in chapter forty-eight zoning, and the erosion and sediment control language from chapter fourteen. Um, this also includes introduction of the new Virginia Stormwater Management Program, general permit for construction, and also creates a specific illicit discharge language for our city. The second portion of this that I want to highlight was the water quality standards. If you turn to your staff report on, uh, line eighty-four, which has a table which outlines what is existing here in the city under our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, um, what the state has required us to do, um, with some options there, and then what I've proposed or the city staff has proposed, um, we adopt. Specifically, right now, we have a thirty-five percent cap on impervious cover, uh, for single-family development. So if somebody comes in and they have, uh, an empty lot, they can develop it up to thirty-five percent impervious cover. Uh, if they have an existing lot and the average is around eighteen percent impervious cover, they're allowed to knock that down or add in addition to that lot that could push that to thirty-five percent. That percentage is our water quality standard. Um, it equates to about one point five pounds of phosphorus per year, per acre per year. The state standard in which, uh, they're leaning to now is a point four one pounds of phosphorus per acre per year. Uh, it does give an exemption for lots that are single-family homes and under one acre. Um, what you have before you tonight is a proposal for point four one for all lots, whether it be new or redevelopment. Uh, I'm sorry, the state standard for redevelopment is a twenty percent reduction. And so I'm proposing that we do a point four one for both new and redevelopment. And the reason is this, is that, um, most of the lots, like I said, on average are about eighteen percent. And so if we adopted the twenty percent reduction, they would be below point four one or roughly there about. And so this creates a, a streamlined approach, much like we do today with a standard that is for redevelopment and new development at point four one. Um, I'm sorry, at thirty-five percent. And so we're transferring that over to something that's roughly about fifteen and a half to sixteen percent is what that phosphorus means. Um, the city staff is not proposing that we adopt the, uh, the option to leave out single-family homes. And then one of the reasons for that is that the increase in impervious cover that we allow through this ordinance would be impervious cover that we have to take away later on for the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. So for every pound that we add to the system, we have to do a project later on with, uh, capital improvement funds and address that to meet our TMDL requirements. So I've spoken a lot about, uh, the single-family homes, uh, the rest of the city. When we have those sites now, the existing ordinance requires that if the, uh, site is greater than fifty percent impervious cover, then, um, they have to do a ten percent reduction in loading. The new regulations, uh, for redevelopment will require a twenty percent reduction, and that's what, uh, I've highlighted here. And new development would have to meet the point four one standard, whether it was single-family or not. The next area I'd like to highlight, um, is the development water, the development criteria for stormwater quantity. Um, here we're proposing the exact, uh, language that the state has mandated for quantity controls. Um, right now, our quantity controls are found in chapter fourteen, minimum standard nineteen, um, in the erosion and sediment control law. And the changes here are not too dramatic, but they do, uh, add some much-needed things that me, as your stormwater engineer, uh, had been wishing to see. And it, it really does solve some of the issues, um, that people can kind of get around. And one of those specifically is about, uh, uh, onsite sheet flow that comes from your standard single-family homes. And so this language gives us some control on how sheet flow is viewed. It also has, uh, an encouragement for reducing stormwater volume through onfill, onsite infiltration techniques. Um, both of these, the water quality and stormwater quantity are grandfathered, there's a clause in there for this to take effect. And what we've, uh, proposed so far, and this is at line one sixty-two in your staff report, is to adopt the state regulations, which says, um, that development that comes into the city and they, all they have to do is submit a plan. Um, and I, and I'll quote it here because it is kind of specific. It says, "Any land disturbing activity for which a valid proffered or conditional zoning plan, preliminary or final subdivision plat, preliminary or final site plan, or zoning with a plan of development, or any document determined by the locality as being equivalent, would be grandfathered, um, by July one, two thousand fourteen." And so we have to adopt this ordinance, uh, for the state by April one, two thousand fourteen, and then, um, this would go into effect for anybody who doesn't submit a plan or, or as I outlined there, um, on July one. And again, the reason why you would want to do this perhaps early, um, would to be to limit the impervious cover that sites can develop now under our current standards. So this is actually one area that we do have some control over, s, the city council, is that it does have a, a mandate from the state to adopt by April one, but we can do it earlier for the, uh, reasons I've stated before. And the final piece, I'm sorry, the third piece I'd like to highlight is the Virginia Stormwater Management Program General Permit for Discharges. Um, this is pretty straightforward as a mandate, um, to take over the administration of the permit that is currently at the state level, and this applies to sites that have over one acre. Right now, they're required to go out and get a stormwater permit from the state. It's a very similar review to what we do currently. And so instead of somebody coming along with a development and having to get to, um, different organizations to approve basically the same plan, it's provided here at the state level. It's a little more streamlined. There's some, uh, regulations in there for cost recovery of the, uh, additional work for us. And so this, this should help some of the development, uh, with stormwater permitting. And the fourth and final piece I'd like to highlight tonight was the illicit discharge regulations. Uh, this was identified as a top priority in chapter three of the watershed management plan, um, mainly due to our reliance on relatively weak authority under chapter thirty-five, which is solid waste. We're gonna keep the language there because it really speaks about just solid waste and, and not putting in the storm sewer system. Um, but the way that it's written now is very clear and for everyone to understand that basically anything that is not stormwater runoff should not be going in the storm drain. And there are some exemptions, um, for firefighting. And I think at the work session, we also discussed that there's other ones. I know that council members had raised issue with, like, washing cars. And so, um, we can add specific language like that or we can direct it to another location that kind of exempts some of the smaller things. So in summary, um, many of the elements that are in this ordinance are mandatory. Um, like I said, we, we have to adopt this for the state, um, by April first, two thousand fourteen. Um, but there are some policy decisions, and I'd like to highlight those very quickly. Uh, the first is the water quality criteria, um, that I mentioned earlier, the point four one adoption, where we could exempt single-family homes, um, or we could continue with the tougher standard of the point four one, or we could use the twenty percent reduction for redevelopment instead of the point four one. And also, the grandfathering is another area that we have input on, um, where we could move that date up to the date of the, uh, adoption of this ordinance. Um, and so anybody who has submitted a plan, as I kind of described, would be, uh, would have the older regulations to build up to thirty-five percent or ten percent recu, uh, reduction on non-single-family homes. So it is, uh, staff's recommendation to adopt this on the first reading and refer it to the Planning Commission, the Environmental Service Council, and Tree Commission. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For council members.
Jason, have you been in touch with, um, the Tree Commission? Because I know that they have made, um, a number of, uh, they've read the, the ordinance very carefully and they, they've, uh, made recommendations or at least, uh, pointed out some, some language and possible discrepancies with the, um, uh, with stormwater and, uh, landscaping. Do you know anything about that? Have you been talking to them?
Yes, um, I personally have not, but I've been working with the city arborist. I gave him an advanced copy, um, after, well, not really in advance, after we had our work session on the fifteenth. Um, they had a Tree Commission meeting, I believe, last week, and they were able to go through that with some, um, fine-tooth comb. And they did have some recommendations to move some of the, uh, landscaping requirements that are still remaining in zoning into stormwater. Um, and they're very pleased to do that because there is a link between tree canopy and landscaping and stormwater runoff.
Okay, and I, that's, that's all I wanted to do is make sure that loop got closed. Excellent, thank you.
Other council member? Mr. Duncan?
You may have said this, and I'm sorry if you did. Does this apply to schools and other public facilities?
Yes, um, when we do development here in the city, we hold ourselves to our own standards. And so, um, a good example would be TJ Elementary School right now. Um, as part of that addition, they had to meet our current, um, water quality standards, so they had to reduce by ten percent.
So if we were more aggressively, uh, acting, uh, as a good stewards in our public facilities, we would get community credits for reductions that you spoke of there at the beginning? Is that, that, that would factor into our overall formula?
Yes, I, I would recommend, um, because of the TMDL, that when we have an opportunity for redevelopment on city property, that we go above and beyond, uh, a ten or twenty percent reduction, whatever it might be, um, to maximize the land that we do own, um, because it is difficult to achieve the TMDL as, as what we're kind of learning.
Thank you.
When you say get credit, what, what did you mean, credits?
Do you understand what I meant?
Yes.
When you say TMDL, I think, I think you and I are talking about the same thing, I think.
But the city isn't gonna pay credits. You're not gonna, you don't pay.
No.
I, I get what you're talking about.
So I think, um, Mr. Duncan is referring to credit towards the Chesapeake Bay, uh, total maximum daily load. And so the, uh, the state has required us to remove a certain amount of pollution, yeah.
Other council members?
And just to remind council that when we've, we've talked about in this, in the past and this, in terms of the stormwater utility of the fifteen million dollar obligation to meet our total maximum daily load requirements the EPA is imposing on, on localities.
Other council members?
We spoke about this at the workshop, work session, but just if you could, um, enlighten me again, the thirty-five percent existing cap on, um, impervious coverage, what's happening with that in this proposed ordinance?
The, um, in the ordinance that's before the council, that thirty-five percent hard cap would go away. And the reason that the, the length of time between first reading and second reading is so long, this comes back to council for second reading in October, is to allow there to be more work with the Planning Commission and the BZA on the thirty-five percent hard cap. So there's the potential that that can get back on track and, uh, be before the council for adoption by the time this gets adopted.
I would encourage, um, all efforts to do that. I think it's...
Other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Looking at this rather, um, impressive body of work here, um, I would hope that we can get this into a form that our citizens can, um, can understand more than just reading this because it's, a lot of it's frankly impenetrable. So I would hope that we can, uh, develop some materials, questions and answers, other kinds of... of materials. I see where you've got the PowerPoint that you made to us during the work session. That's somewhat useful. But for example, this chart back here where we're talking about changing the impervious surface, and we're going to the Point 4.1, what does that mean to a typical landowner? Does it mean they're more restricted than they were, they're less restricted? You know, what does it really mean to people? It's very difficult for people to understand, and I'm referring to the chart on page 3 out of 90 pages. So my request would be, if there's no disagreement from other members of council, that we develop some materials that can interpret this for our citizens so that they understand it before we go to second reading. The other thing is, there's a prominent architect in the city who's done a lot of very excellent work that has raised some issues about the coverage, that it's working in a way not intended. So I would hope the outreach would be to whatever architectural advisory boards we have, and that we ought to encourage input from our citizens who are engaged in this sort of work.
Other council members?
If I'm not mistaken, Jason received an email saying that you're convening meetings of the heads of HOAs, so I presume you're going to have to prepare what Mr. Snyder already asked for, will already be under preparation for those meetings. Am I correct?
Those, I think, were on a different topic.
This is on...
The general idea of what impervious cover is and how that will be metered for the stormwater utility, most certainly, we're preparing that type of information.
But in terms of the discussion about Point 4.1 pounds of phosphorus and things like that, that would not be the focus of the discussions with the HOA heads. So it is a little bit of a different topic. I mean, this ordinance is complex. There's no question about it. It's a state mandate, so, you know, a lot of this is, you know, from DEQ and EPA type of language.
I think as far as we're, sorry to jump in, but I want to get us moving on the agenda. I think, again, to focus in on, there's the educational component of what the state is mandating us to do. That's sort of a non-choice, unless we're going to get sanctioned or fined, or whatever the repercussions are for not following what the state is mandating us to do. I think the public, we need to have clear, concise messaging on what that is in plain English. Then there's the other piece of it where we need input, which is where we're going beyond or doing something different that the state still allows us to do, but we're making policy decisions. That's an area where we need to gain public input, and that needs to be explained and outreach done, more so than this is what the state is mandating us to do, because we need that input forthwith before we take final action. And I think some of it is still not in plain English yet for our citizens. I think we up here in council have sort of been in the weeds in this and have gotten multiple briefings now, so I think we're getting up to speed. But I have the same concerns that Vice Mayor Snyder stated, is that we need to get, these are significant issues that have dollars and cents attached to it, but are very technical in nature, and we need to figure out a way of unpacking that.
Fair enough. But the reason I asked the question I did is that if you're having a meeting with somebody and you say, "This is going to cost you, say, $250 a year for your fee for having this stormwater enterprise," people are going to ask, "Well, what does that represent? Why am I paying this? How come this fee is being generated?" So I see these two as more interrelated. People are not necessarily going to see these as separate issues. You want $250 a year from me? Well, what am I paying for? How the come I have to do this? That's what I'm referring to. They think they're linked right together.
Yes. That's a good point. I've been working on a robust website to talk about the stormwater utility fee, and I always envisioned that for development purposes, I'll have to spell this out for somebody who wants to come in and recognize what they need to do. So I'm actively preparing some of that information, and I can kind of speed that up and get that on our website. Great. Thank you, Jason. Other council members? If I can get a motion, then we'll open this up for public comment. Ms. Berry?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 13-18. On first reading, refer to Planning Commission, Environmental Services Council, and Tree Commission. Schedule public hearing and second reading for October 28, 2013, and to advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second. Ms. Kaelin on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any. I am seeing one. Just go ahead, and then we'll catch it up, Gary.
Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace. I just was reading this, and based on the information that Jason's provided here, most single-family developments will spend $7,000 to $10,000 to install water treatment facilities. It's my understanding, like, if you have an infiltration trench and so forth, it needs to be cleaned annually or something like that, which, if I remember, my neighbor said it cost him about $1,000 a year. And I think the penalty for not meeting it is $250. Is that right? Well, I think somebody would say, "Bill me $250." Thank you.
Thanks, Gary, for that comment. That's something I think we should think about, whether the incentives are right. So, a little upside down there on the incentives. All right. Any other members of the public that wish to address council? Veronica, did we receive any written comments? I'm going to go ahead and close this to public comment, just for staff. I don't think they need to be included in the proposed, or the commission's, et cetera, that this is going to, but if we can also make sure that Vipas gets this, since they do a lot of environmental work.
And the AAB.
AAB as well, yeah.
I'm sorry, I tuned out. You're referring it to other groups, is that...
No, I'm saying that, I'm just suggesting that we don't need to add it, but that we make sure that there's outreach to the other groups.
I was just going to ask the question. When we do a blanker referral, somebody always says, "How come, you know, we didn't refer it?" And the answer is always, "Everyone is allowed to comment. We're not mean to be restrictive."
That's correct. If I can have the roll call, though?
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaelin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tartar?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. TR 13-21 is a resolution to appoint a task force to work with staff in developing a stormwater credit policy.
Thank you.
This is self-explanatory. It was discussed at work sessions, so we won't provide a staff report, but be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Jason. Questions, council? And this is to set up the working group only, to look at the credits. And just going back on how this relates to the previous issues, and I meant to, yeah, I meant to clarify this earlier. Why, I think initially, we had tried to capture, as far as doing some of these good things in our zoning. I think you all looked at it. For the projects that have been approved so far, the state-enabling statute does not let us capture those projects. Is that right?
That is correct.
So there's not a darn thing we can do, given the amount of land that's involved in those.
That is correct.
But we may be able to do something on the credit side, maybe, to incentivize good deeds and good works on the environmental front?
Yes. That is correct. And so specifically, to work with the developers to capture stormwater off the project, they can get credits for that, or if they go above and beyond on their own projects, they can get credits, and so both would apply.
I would just ask that, given the number of projects that we have approved and that are in the pipeline, if we can just take one more look at that issue? Because I think it's unfortunate that we're missing some infill opportunities to utilize these, because they're really geared towards these big projects, and we've got a couple big projects going on. It'd be unfortunate if we couldn't deal with them, but if the state doesn't allow us, so be it. But if we can just take one more run at that, I know that there's some language, but there's some other interpretations that are possible, I think would be good for us to know. John, if you can take a look at that again. Any questions on TR 13-21?
Mr. Mayor, on line 110, does it mean to say whichever occurs first? Maybe I'm just not getting this. If they do not report out a final draft by December 31st, we would have to extend them?
Yes. And so the way that's drafted is it's intended to provide a good, strong incentive to get the job done. If it doesn't get done, we can come back to council and ask for more time, but it will be awkward if it's not done by then.
Okay. So that's deliberate. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. If I can get a motion, then we'll open this up.
Mr. Mayor, I move passage of TR 13-21.
If I can get a second?
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. Any members of the public that wish to address this item? Mr. Laporta?
Thank you, council. Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace, again. The makeup of the broad community sectors, seven members. We have commercial mixed-use, commercial developer. What about commercial-commercial? Just a plain old business person, say Broaddale Shopping Center, a giant, whatever the giant parking structure is, they're neither mixed-use nor developer. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just looking at this. Any other member, any other comments from the public? If I can have the roll call, I'm going to go ahead and close this up for public comment and ask for the roll call.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaelin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tartar?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
And just getting back to the comment that we heard publicly, I'm not reading commercial developers necessarily excluding commercial property owners. Sort of my read-at-it.
TR 13-23 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, declaring its intention to reimburse itself from the proceeds of one or more financings for certain capital project costs.
Richard?
Again, council, this is before you requesting adoption of a reimbursement resolution. As we begin and embark on our capital project expenditures, we are making disbursements prior to the issuance of the bonds. So we are trying to protect ourselves so that we can get reimbursed once the bonds are issued.
Thank you. Any questions for Richard on this? If I can get a motion and then open it up. Ms. Kaelin?
I move to adopt TR 13-23.
If I can get a second?
Yes.
Ms. Berry on the second. Any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any. Veronica, did we receive any written comments? I'm going to go ahead and close this to public comment. If I can have the roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaelin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tartar?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
What? Sorry. It's okay. Why don't we take a quick five-minute break? That's all right. I had a request for that. So why don't we, we've been going at it for a while, so why don't we come back at 10? So we're adjourned until 10? Oh. That's okay.[302.12]
Next item on the agenda. I believe this is the bond item, or did we already do that?
We did.
We did that one.
TR-13-22.
If we can, if we can have a reading of that item, please.
TR-13-22 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Falls Church authorizing the conveyance of 201 West Broad Street.
Thank you. Before we have a discussion of that, as a prudential matter, as I've disclosed before, I own property at 243 Gundry Drive in the City of Falls Church, and my wife is president of the Winter Hill Community Association. And as a prudential matter, this issue may be affecting three or more homeowners in the area, and I filed with the city clerk, again, as a prudential matter, and I can consider these matters fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the resolution authorizing the conveyance of 201 West Broad, commonly referred to as the Mailboxes Building. That property would be conveyed to Atlantic Realty Companies. The property currently generates annual rent of about $33,000 a year for the city. The property would be conveyed to Atlantic as part of a potential redevelopment, not only of the Mailboxes property, but adjacent properties. With that redevelopment, it is estimated it would generate $560,000 in annual net revenue for the city. This redevelopment would be 100% commercial. It would include first-floor retail on the frontage for both Broad Street as well as Maple Avenue. Atlantic would pay the city $300,000 for the Mailboxes property. The city would also receive, in exchange for the Mailboxes property, property across Maple that is worth about $235,000. So, given all that, as well as the fact that with this conveyance, we will resolve the Atlantic litigation, it is my recommendation that the City Council approve this resolution. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions by council members? Not seeing any. If I can, I'd like to open this up for, or why don't I get a motion first, and then I'll open it up.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of TR-13-22.
If I can get a second, please.
Second.
Ms. Berry on the second. Like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address this item? Veronica, did we receive any written comments? I'm gonna go ahead and close this for public comment. Counsel, any comments before we take a vote? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The hour is late, so the speech will be short. I just want to recognize that many people, I want to recognize that many people, over many years, worked on the City Center Plan in its original form, and it now comes back to us, at least we hope, the beginning of it comes back to us in this form. And I just want to thank all those who have served here before and on groups such as the City Center Task Force to enable us to get to the place where we are tonight, and thank the city staff too, because the discussions, as we all know, were difficult at times. Just one question, if I could. On line 23, while the settlement agreement will remain confidential, just wondering, and then the paragraph goes on to explain a good bit about the proposed development, is there anything that we've been told that we're not supposed to tell people? I mean, most, everything that you've got written here are the things that we know.
No, that, thank you for the question, Mr. Duncan. The short answer is no. Now, the settlement agreement itself is confidential. That is not subject to disclosure under FOIA, so the settlement agreement itself should remain confidential, but the terms that are laid out here and the other ones that we've discussed, no, those may be shared with the public.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Mayor, I would, I would just say that this resolves outstanding litigation, provides immediate benefits, and offers the prospect of the most significant commercial development the city has ever seen. So I'd strongly support this. Thank you.
Other council members?
I just wanted to echo the comments that Vice Mayor Snyder made. The one thing I'll point out is that should a project come forward as a result of this, it's gonna have to stand on its own merits. And then certainly, it hasn't been prejudged based on this project, process, but it just at least paves the road for the potential of a project to come forward rather than things stagnating. But again, it's not that there's a project there, other than we're anticipating something to be significantly commercial in that area. But what that looks like and is, remains to be seen.
If I can have the roll call.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe? Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. TR-13-24 is a resolution submitting to the qualified voters of the city of, of the city, a referendum on whether the City of Falls Church water system should be sold to the Fairfax County Water Authority. Said referendum is set to be, is to be set for the general election on November 5th, 2013.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, this is a procedural resolution required by Virginia law that simply sets, or I should say requests, at the Arlington County Circuit Court, set the sale of the water system down for referendum on November 5th, 2013. I'd like to stress that this is obviously not a decision on the merits of the sale of the system. That decision will be made by the voters of the city on November 5th, and there will be extensive public discussion between now and then, including town halls and other forums where this issue will be discussed. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Foster? If I can get a motion, then we'll open it up. Mr. Kalin?
Move to adopt TR-13-24.
If I can get a second, please.
Nope.
Mr. Charter on the second. Any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any. Veronica, did we receive any written comments? And Mr. Foster, this, just again, this only addresses putting it on the referendum, does not involve any transactions with the federal government or the federal courts. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And again, as all things water, if anything develops with the federal government or the federal courts, if staff can just let me know. If I can have the roll called up.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
And we have the consent items.
Mr. Mayor, could I request that the Southwest Street item be pulled off just for me to ask a question?
Yes. So we're pulling off the Southwest Street, which is?
That is the Arthur Construction Company.
It's the second one?
Yeah, that's right, second one. So that leaves two, two items on the consent plus appointments. The first is authorization for the city manager to award contracts to Arthur Construction, Finley Asphalt and Ceiling, and Virginia Paving Company for paving and concrete services and for amounts up to $400,000 annually, and to renew these contracts annually for four additional one-year periods, subject to annual appropriation by the city council in the budget. This is our standard paving contract that we do each year, and is the result of a bid process, and these are the low qualified bids for this work in the city. And the second item on the consent calendar is permission for the city manager to accept a part-time teaching position with a Virginia Tech certificate and local government management program. This is an assignment that I took for the first time last summer, and I have been invited back to do it again this summer. It does involve teaching on Wednesday afternoons, so I need to leave the office at 3:30 on Wednesday afternoons in order to get over to the Fairfax County Office Building to teach the class, but I do record that time as personal time, and am off the clock during that period of time. Those are the two items on consent.
And the appointments. So if we can get a report for appointments. Ms. Berry?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Mr. Duncan and I are, as always, pleased to meet with all of our boards and commission members, and no more so than, than Dr. Wright. And we are delighted that she has agreed to serve again, and we, we recommend her fully to the council.
Thank you. All right. If I can get a motion on the consent agenda, please. Vice Mayor Snyder, if you would make the motion, please.
Move adoption on the consent agenda.
Thank you. If I can get a second, please.
That I can do, second.
Thank you. If I can have the roll call.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
That leaves the item that was removed from consent.
And Cindy Mester is here as well on our capacity, both as the CIP leader on the staff side and also in her role as interim public works director.
So why don't we just go to questions? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone, I think, knows, I live on Southwest Street. First time something like this has come up. I just want to disclose that. This sounds like a very significant project. You know, want to make clear that this has been in the works for a long time. It's not in any way related to who happens to live on Southwest Street. And Mr. Laporta booing from the audience. So there's that. The second question is, in discussions, very preliminary discussions about redevelopment possibilities over on the other side of West Street on Northwest and Broad, there was some discussion of, you know, realigning of the intersection or whatever. I'm just wanting to, you know, get on the record, make sure that there's nothing that we're doing on the Southwest Street side that would not match up with whatever might happen somewhere down the line on Northwest Street. If we're gonna spend a million dollars, we ought to be confident it's gonna last for, and that's the other question. How long does a project like this generally give us?
Let me do all three of them, and I'll include the long-term impact. On the first one, this has been a, the project itself is a result of a long-term past CIP project where we've done a roadbed assessment, and we're doing second phase because we have determined a lot of our roads don't have a good base that they've been built on, and so that's why they deteriorate, and it, it doesn't hold the paving as long when we just resurface. So it has been in the planning for an extended period of time. This specific project has also been identified as a need, and it's been part of a revenue sharing grant. So it's a 50-50 project. This would be a long-term, so that our paving, when we rebuild the roadbed assessment to the VDOT standards of a good base, you get a good 10-year lifespan on the core base. You, of course, will have to resurface periodically in between. And the transportation planner, engineer that's working this project is also involved in the potential redevelopment on the northwest side, and so we're very cognizant of and watching the intersections. But what we're doing on northwest won't impact the interface at Broad, and would tie in crossing, and then there could be the redevelopment as part of the project tying into WNOD. But we'll watch that closely, and it's not good money that will be undone.
Okay. If I could, just another couple of questions. The project of this scope must have some pretty significant timeframe attached to it. There are a good many folks along the whole stretch here that use the street for on-street parking. Just want to make sure there's a process of notice and some notion of when this is gonna happen.
Yes, once the contract is awarded, then we'll be able to work with the vendor to develop the plan, the schedule, the timeline, the phasing, so that we don't block all roads and totally impact off, on-street parking. And then we'll do message communication similar to what we do when we're doing our annual paving program or street sweeping.
And after it's all over, there's money in the budget to paint, re-stripe. I mean, some years ago, you can tell how long I've been here, this was done, and we never really got back the parking lanes that were painted on that first stretch of Southwest Street. But there will be money in the budget to do whatever is deemed appropriate for striping and stop bars and so forth, right?
This'll be curb gutter pavement and required striping.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Anything else? All right. If I can get a motion, then it would be the motion that's on the, is it strapped in?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the city manager amend the new contract with Arthur Construction Company Incorporated to expand, expand up to $1.027 million for the 2013 Southwest Street roadbed reconstruction capital project.
Thank you. If I can get a second, please. Ms. Berry on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to come forward on this item? Not seeing any. Did we receive any written comments on this? I'm gonna go ahead and close this item up for public comment, and have the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we are on to business not on the agenda. Mr. Kalin?
I had asked for discussion of bankruptcy in Detroit. I realize it's late. I'm willing to have it done, I'd like it to have it done at a council meeting. Perhaps we could have put on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Regular council meeting?
Regular council meeting.
What, why don't we go ahead and do that, in light of the way down?
This is very important. The bankruptcy and downgrade of Chicago will have an impact.
Detroit.
Detroit was bankrupt. Detroit already is bankrupt, so it's beyond getting downgraded. You can't borrow at all. But Chicago took a three-notch downgrade because of pension problems and its inability to fund some, its pension issues plus other stuff. And of course, we know what happened in Detroit. This also is very critical because it comes back to the fund balance and the borrowing program that we're planning to do when municipal finance is now in the spotlight and under pressure. So this is a very, very important topic, and probably better not to do it at the end of the night when people may be, so you have a two-week reprieve, Richard. We had asked that to check out with the, with our financial advisors to get their market take, but I will be looking forward to it because this is gonna impact, is we're planning to do a lot of borrowing in the near future. And this is gonna be something we're gonna have to contend with in a very big way.
I think it's a, it's an important issue, so unless there's any objections, why don't we go ahead and reschedule it for comments and a briefing for the next regular council meeting?
Could we do part of that as the city manager comments rather than at the end?
Yeah, we can do that upfront, rather than at the back end. Go ahead and schedule it that way. Anything else on business not on the agenda? We're on to council member comments. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Mayor, again, like the subject that Councilmember Kalin brought up, I'd like to do a briefing on the transportation, Northern Virginia Transportation Authority developments. Also, this week, there'll be a Critical Cog meeting on Chesapeake Bay-related issues. So those are a couple of other briefings for, I think, that are gonna be very relevant to the community. The NVTA is scheduled to vote on the first set of projects on Wednesday, and we've got some projects in that mix, and we'll advocate those. So we'll see how we come out.
Other council member comments? Mr. Duncan?
In the small things category, I just want to commend staffer Nancy Vincent, who at the HSEC meeting on Thursday, found out from a citizen that the plantings around the Aurora House were in less than ideal shape, and by 4 o'clock Friday afternoon, somehow miraculously had seen to it that that was taken care of. I just wanted to commend that quick action. That's the sort of thing that inspires confidence when citizens, you know, raise a concern and it's addressed within 24 hours. Thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Kalin?
I'd like to, in last week's work session, we, I don't know what I would do with Ms. Berry to remind me.
We talked about the city going out, developing, and tell me why, if you have the same understanding, going out, developing a terms of reference, possible terms of areas of interest, possible cost of contracting an internal auditor, an independent internal auditor for the city. This is something that is very important. This was a recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee, Mary and myself. We really have, our financial disclosures by our external auditor are handled properly, well done, but that's not the same as an internal auditor. The external auditor is interested in financial disclosures. An internal auditor is interested in governance issues, best practices, issues of conflict of interest, issues competitiveness, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's a very different type of work. One of the reasons why it's believed that this is such an important issue now is that the city is looking forward to between $100 and $120 million in capital expenses in the next few years. And in this area, frankly, we have very weak internal controls. And with that amount of money and that number of contracts that will be taking place, it's gonna be essential that there be an independent set of eyes to look at, to make sure that the best practices are being followed, and the money is being wisely and effectively spent. So this would be some of the things that an internal auditor would look. Even on today's agenda, we have a number of consent items, perfectly reasonable, but in the end of the day, a four-year contract is done, a million dollars is gonna be committed, and we don't really have a specific internal order just to make sure that everything is done. Not that there'd be SDC wrong, but maybe best practices aren't being followed. Maybe there's a way to improve the efficiency. That's one of the functions of an internal auditor, is to increase operational efficiency. So I think there's a lot of scope here. The issue of the transfer for the trustees from the OPEB to the retirement board, an internal auditor might have recommended that a couple of years ago. So there are all sorts of issues that are benign and intended to help the efficiency of the city, not just protect it against fraud or conflict of interest issues. So it depends. But I believe the city manager indicated by mid-September, a document might be, a staff report could be provided to the council with some ideas on how to proceed, including possible cost implications. And finally, on a separate and unrelated matter, I was surprised, and I respect everybody's right to express their opinion on issues. I hadn't thought that the issue of Ms. Thomas, Helen Thomas, would come up, but I would like to reiterate that, or iterate that, this is one council member's views. It's not a view that I share, and it is not a view of the council. The council has not spoken to this issue as such. Just to have the record straight on it. Thank you.
Anything else by council members? I had one thing to report in my individual capacity, not related to my evening or day job, but related to being a former Truman, Harry S. Truman scholar. I attended the Harry S. Truman Scholarship Association Conference this past weekend. Learned a lot, some of, some of the issues that came up. There was actually some good dialogue about local government initiatives, et cetera. The foundation is able to get very well-known speakers, most who happen to be Harry S. Truman scholars, such as the president of the Ford Foundation, which is the second-largest philanthorical organization in the world, Madeline Albright, the head of the New York Educational Mission, or I'm forgetting the exact name. So some very engaging speakers, and then there's a whole host of speakers related to a variety of policy issues, one of them centered on actually pensions that are being discussed. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend that one. I was attending a different session. But again, the, some of the issues that we're discussing are, are being discussed by what I think are both people who are in the field, who are very accomplished, and also by the young whippersnappers as well. And they're talking about public pensions. So I think that just reemphasizes the point. This is an ongoing dialogue that people are happening, having. On a similar note, something that I, with councils, prerogatives as well, I'd like to discuss with staff, is an innovative idea that I'd never heard of before, and it's called a hackathon. And it's a way of bringing creative thinkers in the tech world into the city to essentially develop apps, and they can be based on ways of, you know, getting things done for the city, or they can be just bringing people together on their creative juices, very low cost. Some of it's in the public domain, et cetera. It's very techie. I can't say I understood it all, but it sounded very cool. And I know that we've got, you know, a lot, a lot of cities are doing this now, and that maybe another way that we can look at branding ourselves, doing something, possibly partnering with other jurisdictions to do a hackathon in the City of Falls Church. And we may, we may be able to pull in some businesses that have actually a pretty good web presence, have them involved in that. So I need to formulate that. If that's where, if there's support for that on council, I'd like to work with staff to do that, but it is gonna take some staff time and working with the chamber. So before I do that, I wanted to make sure that there's support here for it before I do that.
You usually just think what you do. You set a goal, you offer a prize. You get them together, you set a goal, you offer a prize, and they all go at it for the fun of it.
Yes.
So let's, let's have them go up with a way to time the, the city council meetings or something like that.
An app.
Exactly.
We should have offered him a prize on Split Lot, you know, rulings, I think.
An app for that.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing, Montageob does a little of that big data thing with communities, so that's a good idea, I think, would be good for us to do. By the time we meet next, the city will have celebrated its 65th birthday on August 3rd. Just wanted the record to reflect happy birthday to Falls Church, 65 years old.
All right. And unless there's anything else, let's turn to the minutes. We've got one set of minutes, and they've been revised.
Yes.
Any, any edits or comments on these as revised? They were in the green packet.
Yep.
If I can get a motion on the, if I can get a motion on the?
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes as corrected.
Of Monday?
I'm sorry, Monday, July 8th, 2013.
Thank you. If I can get a second? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The meeting agenda, or I'm sorry, the meeting minutes of July 8th are adopted. If I can have a motion to adjourn? If I can, that's Mr. Kalin, if I can have a second?
Second.
That's Mr. Duncan on the second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, counsel.